All right, we are needing some commissioners. So if you're listening, come on back in. There we go. Okay, we will now convene our public hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM. And it is 6:00 PM. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item before you, item number 25, is the first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 2 of the Leon County Code of Laws regarding animal control to prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits. The item requests that the board conduct the first and only public hearing to adopt the ordinance that would prohibit retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in the unincorporated area of Leon County. Currently, there are no pet stores in the unincorporated area that sell dogs, cats, and only one that sells rabbits. Animal Patrol and Humane Society have been engaged with one pet store to ensure that they are aware of the proposed ordinance. We're recommending option 1 to adopt the ordinance. And I do have, we do have several speakers' cards on the ordinance. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you. First speaker is Savannah Vickery, to be followed by Samantha Jules.
Ms. Vickery, please say your name and address for the record.
My name is Savannah Vickery, and I live at 4830 Lemoze Drive.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Savannah Vickery, and I'm here on behalf of Redemptive Love Farm and Rescue. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that takes care of three main components. We provide animal therapy. We've visited 51 facilities this year. We do agricultural education, which has educated over 5,000 students in the past year, primarily in Leon County. And we take in rescue livestock animals that are neglected, abused, and unwanted, which has been a total of 235 animals in the past year. Now, the biggest number of animals we see is rabbits. And we are seeing an increased number of rabbits that come from these pet stores because they, these people who get these rabbits don't end up getting the proper information that they need, and they end up not providing the correct housing, and they bring them to us. Now, in 2021, when we first started taking in rabbits, we saw 15. It was followed by 27 in 2022, 35 in 2023, and 80 in 2024. In the last week, we have had five requested schedules for rabbit owner surrenders. This is, as an intake coordinator, I am seeing an increased amount of rabbits being surrendered that were brought from pet stores. We have tried to partner with pet stores to adopt out the rabbits we have looked for, to adopt out the rabbits we have looking for new homes, and it could help them bring the supply sales, but our proposition was declined. We are not anti-breeders. We are hopeful that they will change their minds in the future. We are pro-ethical and responsible breeding and pro-adoption. We are pro-consumer protection. We want the best for our community and the rabbits in it, and we thank you for the, we thank you for considering this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery.
Samantha Jules, to be followed by Katie Stryker.
Name and address for the record, Ms. Jules.
My name is Samantha Jules. My address is 1910 Sunset Lane.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Samantha. I'm a law student at Florida State University College of Law. I'm the president of the Student Animal Legal Defense Fund, and I'm a member of the Florida Bar. I would like to thank you for taking the time to hear us speak, as well as supporting us in protecting consumers and protecting animals. This ordinance is a good policy decision for protecting us and our pets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jules.
Katie Stryker, to be followed by our final speaker on this item, Kate McFaul.
Thank you, Ms. Stryker. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, quick, I just want to recognize Katie Stryker is one of our appointees to the Shelter Board. Thank you for that.
I know you look familiar. Ms. Stryker, go ahead.
My name is Katie Stryker, and I live at 2124 Trimble Road. I stand before you as a representative of Leon County Humane Society. I thank you for considering this bill for the welfare of animals. Similar to redemptive love, we get many inquiries on surrendering rabbits, and we're not even able to keep up with them or take in as many as we'd like to. So I hope that this bill, this ordinance lowers the number of unwanted rabbits in Leon County and appreciate cats and dogs being on there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stryker.
Final speaker on this item, Kate McFaul.
Chairman, my point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
A number of citizens are wearing overcoats here, and I was pondering, could we turn the air down?
Is it chilly?
One second, eh?
We have a motion and a second to turn the air down a skosh. All say yes. Thank you, Ms. McFaul. Go right ahead. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Hi, good evening. Kate McFaul, 1206 Walton Drive. Very briefly, I want to thank you for considering this ordinance, and I also want to thank you for taking time to meet with me and talk with me over the last several months about this very important issue. You will be joining, if this indeed passes, 85 other local municipalities, cities, and counties with similar ordinances just here in Florida and 500, almost 500 nationwide. So we appreciate you looking out for our consumers and for pets. Thank you so much for your efforts and time on this very important issue.
Thank you, Ms. McFaul.
And I forgot to say, I'm representing the Humane Society of the United States. Thank you so much.
You're doing great. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a mo, Commissioner O'Keefe, you recognize, make a motion.
Thank you. I move that we take option 1, adopt the ordinance after this, as a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, second.
Second from Commissioner Cummings. We're in discussion, any discussion? Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner O'Keefe for bringing this up, and I've spoken with a number of different people on the issue and appreciate their attention to it and their interest in the policy. I support option 1 with an exception. And let me explain, let me explain why, and then I'm going to make a substitute motion. There's, as the county administrator mentioned, there's one retail store that sells rabbits in the unincorporated area, and there are no stores that sell dogs and cats retail. So it's just that one store selling rabbits. I went and, when this issue came up a few months ago, I went and visited that store twice, and I spoke to the owner and the manager. And I asked him the question, you know, what, do you have a rabbit mill? How do you get your rabbits? You know, what is the issue? Are there any issues there? And they told me that they've had a sole supplier of rabbits for 20 years. It's a woman in Lake City, and when she heard about the ordinance being proposed, she was despondent because she had some damage with, I think Hurricane Milton had damaged her barn. If this goes through, she's not going to repair her barn. And, you know, this basically has ripple effects to a lot of different things. These mom-and-pop pet stores and these pet supply stores operate on a razor-thin margin. And as our Business Impact Study said, the potential loss for this policy change to this one business would be between $58,000 and $98,000 a year. This business, by all appearances, is following the law, is doing everything right, is caring for these animals. And so what I'd like to propose is supporting the motion at hand, but having an exception for rabbits. If it becomes an issue, if it comes, if it becomes an issue with this store, having issues with rabbits coming in that are, that are, that are, that have health issues, diseases, that type of thing, I'd like to address it. I'd like to address it here. But this supplier and this store have been working together for 20 years, and the manager told me, out of the 20 years, they've had maybe a, less than a handful of issues with the health of the rabbits. And so my motion is to, is option 1 with the exception of the rabbits in the ordinance, I'd like to make that as a substitute motion.
So we have a substitute motion from Commissioner Meyer. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Command. We are in discussion on the substitute motion, staff recommendation excluding rabbits. Commissioner Command, question.
The reason I'm supporting the substitute motion, and I support the original motion too. I remember when this came back the first time, I don't really like imposing new ordinance that put people out of business. And as long as, you know, we are, I'm sure we have inspectors that go and inspect, you know, these businesses and how they operate. As long as they're operating legally and under high morale and not mistreating animals, I really have no problem with it. And I don't think local government should really interfere with existing business practices, especially if they are not breaking the law. So that's why I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner O'Keefe, are you in the, you were in the queue, or, okay. Let me get to Commissioner O'Keefe, and then we'll come back to you, Commissioner Meyer, for follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the substitute motion, my concerns are, this is not, this ordinance is not only about the impact and are we of one particular business and whether or not at that store they are humanely holding animals or rabbits. As laid out in the analysis and the background provided by the Humane Society when this was created, we're talking about other effects. We're talking about the number of people who buy a rabbit at a pet store, who don't realize how much of responsibility is, how long they live, and then our shelter and our rescue organizations get those rabbits dumped on them. Now, that's not this business's responsibility that that happens, but I did want to clarify that the only reason this ordinance does not only relate to the humane treatment of animals in the store that they are located, it relates to the whole supply chain and the result on our community. And then as far as, I do have sympathy for the supplier of the business that's somewhere else, but I would have a hard time explaining to someone why we believe the same standards for dogs and cats that we have chosen in this county that we approve are not the same standards for rabbits, which are in the same retail and population environment. That's my objection to the substitute.
Okay. Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner O'Keefe's comments. My, my response to that would be, there's, there's no business right now in the unincorporated area that is selling dogs and cats retail. So there are no businesses that will be, that could be potentially be put out of business by this policy. What the manager and owner told me of the store is that it's not just the loss in revenue from the loss of being able to sell rabbits. It's a, it's a pet supply store predominantly. So not only are using, losing the revenue of selling the rabbits, you're also not having customers come back into the store to buy rabbit supplies like bedding, food, enclosures, that type of thing, which is a significant part of their business. It's not just selling the rabbit. It's all the, it's that customer loyalty that you form by having the rabbit purchased there that has many years of revenue coming into that store because of that connection that the owner has made with, with the pet, with the, with the store. And then what I would, what I would recommend, instead of, I'd recommend keeping the rabbit exemption here, and instead of punishing this business, which has done everything right, according to what I've been told and by all appearances, let's, let's manage this issue on the front end. Let's have our Animal Service Center do a PR campaign, helping to educate potential rabbit owners about the, all the, all the work they're getting into. I think that's probably a smarter way to go about it. The money we would spend on a PR campaign through the Animal Service Center, educating potential rabbit owners, is much cheaper than the loss of revenue for this store between $58,000 and $98,000 a year. So that would be my recommendation. Granted, and mark my words, if we see any issues with rabbits in the coming future, I will be happy to support this ordinance coming back to include rabbits, but I don't want to put, I don't want to take revenue away from a business that's doing everything right, by all appearances, which hires employees in this community and punishes them for something that has not been defined yet as a problem through that store. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly appreciate the individuals that came and spoke in support of this, of this ordinance, and I understand Commissioner Command's concern, but since we have only identified one business that's selling rabbits very lucrative, looking at their annual, estimated annual revenues, I'm wondering, and maybe this might be a question for our county attorney, if we could perhaps grandfather this business in and then still allow this ordinance as prohibitive for sales of rabbits?
Great question. Madam County Attorney?
I am so. I was having a sidebar with sort of the assistant county attorneys. Could you repeat your question for me?
Yes. Since we've only, in the analysis, only one business has been identified as selling rabbits, and they're making quite a lucrative business through the sale of rabbits. Could we perhaps pass this ordinance but grandfather this particular business in as far as they are continuing to sell rabbits?
Yes, you could.
We could do that.
You could.
Okay. Absolutely. Well, I know we have what a substitute motion on the floor, but perhaps with a friendly, with a substitute motion, except for friendly amendment, and that way it doesn't adversely affect this business, but we still have this ordinance as it relates to the sale of rabbits.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Commissioner Meyer.
I would be in support of that suggestion. My only concern, and it's a slight one, is let's say over time that the store has a change in management and it's no longer a store that has a supplier that is providing healthy rabbits. I don't mean to complicate the issue, but it's effectively by exempting and grandfathering in that one store, you're giving, giving them a pardon, which, you know, basically exonerates them from anything they might do in the future, a peremptive pardon. So I wouldn't want to, I don't, I don't know. If the, I'm okay with the, with the motion, with the change. That's my only concern I have. Listen, these, these people are, this is a pet store that really cares about, about the animals that it raises and sells, and so it's, I've got confidence in them, but as a matter of policy, it could be something, it could be an issue in the future.
All right, so we've got a substitute motion and a second. Did you, yeah, you didn't amend your substitute, right?
No, no.
Okay, so the substitute is essentially the same as the ordinance is written with the exclusion of rabbits. Commissioner Maddox, did you want to hop in on this? Sorry. That was a totally accidental.
No, was it? You're the tiebreaker.
Oh, man.
But just for clar-
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah, just for clarification on Commissioner Meyer's comments, so you're not in favor of grandfathering this particular business in because of something that might happen in the future?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'll support it. I'll support it. It may not be, it may not be perfect, but I think it gets to where we want to go, in my mind, and I think it probably satisfies Commissioner O'Keefe. So I would support this amendment.
Commissioner Meyer, is your concern that, like, in the future, these folks could just, like, let rabbits run wild because we've accepted them? We could turn into Australia around here.
Well, I'm always of the opinion, no, it's better to get more with a carrot than a stick, so.
Carrot, a rabbit.
Commissioner Maddox, did you want to chime in?
It's definitely getting late, ain't it?
You've got a long way to go, man.
So as I understand it, the substitute motion with the amendment being accepted, Commissioner O'Keefe, you would, you would, you could support that?
Yes, except as written with rabbits, but grandfather the one existing store.
And that was the amendment that was accepted?
I'll accept that for the amendment, yes.
Specific to rabbits.
Specific to rabbits?
Yep.
Okay, Madam County Attorney, do you, does that track? You got it? Okay, so we've got a motion, a substitute motion that's been amended. We have a second from Commissioner Command. You cool with that? The second, you're still cool with it? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
I'm going to take this one.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, you have before you the continued first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Section 6-32 and 6-34, and Chapter 14, Section 14-56 of the Leon County Code of Laws relating to hearing procedure and administrative fines and liens. At this continued public hearing, staff is recommending that the board approve changes to the county code to address the following substantive issues. To create an opportunity for a property owner to request a second code enforcement hearing to contest whether their property has been brought into compliance, the validity of the fine amount, and/or the imposition of a lien, and this would happen prior to a fine being assessed and a lien imposed. Also, for consistency with state law, changes, it proposes to change the date that a fine begins to accrue for a repeat violator, which is when a property owner commits a violation within five years of a prior violation of the same code section. And that change would be from the date of the repeat violator is notified of the violation to the date designated staff validates the repeat validation. The proposed ordinance also extends the timeframe for someone to appeal the entry of a nuisance abatement order from 15 days to 30 days, which is consistent with the timeframe to appeal a code enforcement board order and the Florida rules of civil procedure to file an appeal in other types of cases. Additionally, whether there is a, there are different competing versions, whether to retain the current language in the code that permits the county to lien personal and other real property of a violator. This was discussed at the initial hearing in December. This has been authorized in state law since 1986, and the county code was expressly changed to permit this in 2017. The code provisions in 50 other Florida counties mirror this provision in state law. And it is also notable that the county can never foreclose on homestead property. That's not a change. That's just something as a baseline for the commission to understand, and that the county has foreclosed on less than five properties since 1988. So foreclosure is utilized very, very rarely. Compliance is instead always the goal, and the, but the ability to lien personal and other real property violators is another tool in the toolbox as an enforcement mechanism that staff would like to retain in the code. Therefore, staff is recommending option 1, which would retain this language in the code. If the board does not want to retain that existing language about the ability to lien personal and other real property, that would be option 2. Now, not to confuse you, but the two versions of the code, option 1 mentions that if you retain the language, you would be approving Attachment 1. That's actually Attachment 2 in your agenda materials. If you approve option 2 and you take out the language, then you're actually approving Attachment 1. So if you have any questions about that or about the proposed changes to the ordinance, happy to answer any questions you may have. Staff is also here to answer any questions as well.
Okay, Commissioners. Commissioner Proctor, you got it.
County Attorney, why does a fine, a fine, a mere fine, is by law that it translates to a lien? And why does our fines constitute a lien against the property? And is that state statute?
It is. In fact, violations of your code that are addressed by the Code Enforcement Board all pertain to violations related to the underlying property itself, which is why initially, when there, a violation is found by the Code Enforcement Board, the fines start to accrue on a daily basis, and if it's not remedied timely, only at that point is a lien assessed against the property. Many times, after property owners come into compliance, or maybe the property is sold and a subsequent owner comes in, they will go back to the Code Enforcement Board, explain the circumstances, and they will request a reduction in the amount of the fine or the lien. That happens very commonly.
You, you consider the building behind the courthouse, does it have any code enforcement against it? It's been an eyesore. How does the fine, the liens work, and is that, the fines against that building that's incomplete, does it translate into a lien, and does it give them first position in the lineup of liens of the city?
Well, I can tell you anecdotally, that is actually governed by the city's code enforcement. We only govern the unincorporated areas because the city has its own code enforcement provisions in its code, but I do know anecdotally that there are liens against that property for various violations, but I couldn't provide you any detail because I haven't looked at that. That's the city's purview.
Well, various subcontractors have not been paid, and I get those, those types of liens, but in terms of the actual code enforcement for an unsitee, site, S-I-T-E, I ponder how that would work. Our county's office is often run, in my opinion, roughshod over residents in this area, and specifically, we don't have a relaxation once these liens from the county, you know, go up against these people in their mobile home, and you, you know, you trot up a multiple thousand dollar, and people can't sell the property until they pay the county. And it may not be the, you know, major piece of property like out back, but for them, $7,000, $4,000, $3,000 lien that they would have to pay first before they could go to closing is very oppressive. And I've always been concerned, but your office temperament over time, predating you, Attorney Holstein, has not been empathetic, in my opinion, to the county dropping a noose around the necks of those who've been charged with a, with a lien from the county. And I just don't really quite understand what's so holy about you owe the county some I know you can go to jail for child support. I get that. That's kind of sacred. But just because the county's people rode around and says you owe for, you know, car around the back of the yard, or the grass needed mowing, we just absolutely suffocate. And I hate this policy, and I'm going to vote against it because it goes much too far to cut off the property rights of citizens that the county believes that you owe me some money for your, whatever it is. Grass is too tall, the houses need fixed, whatever it is. But we should not stand in the way of people's transferability of their property, and they should definitely have the capacity to alienate or to pass on their property. But what we do, we stand at the gate and block a, this provision will stand at the gate and block a closing that people can't have until they come and see the county. And I just don't think that what we charge in people is all that sacred, and we just shouldn't lift ourselves that high and mighty above the public community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Before I go to County Attorney, I don't think we have a motion. So before we go into any further discussion, can we get a motion on the item?
Staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance remaining the language.
Okay, we've got a motion for staff recommendation. One, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Maddox. Okay, now we're in the proper posture. Madam County Attorney, you can respond.
Just point of information, code enforcement complaints come in from constituents. Staff then investigates them. If they're determined that they actually do violate the code, those complaints go to the Code Enforcement Board, which decides whether violations have occurred and whether to start to assess fines. Those are not prosecuted by the county attorney's office. We- We represent staff, county staff which prosecutes the cases, and the code enforcement board has its own counsel. Just wanted to clarify that for the board.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner O'Keefe is in the queue. So Commissioner Cummings, go ahead. Commissioner Maddox, you were in the queue. Are you good? Okay. Commissioner Cummings, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just first of all, a clarification, Madam County Attorney. Attachment number two, proposed ordinance amending that chapter where the language was removed to place liens on all property owned by the property owners. Is that the one that we are dealing with now? Number two?
So that language is actually in the existing...
What you looking at? What we talking about?
Mr. Proctor, please hold on and let Madam County Attorney speak.
I need to know what we talking about? What provision?
The amendments, attachments, where it says...
I'm under two. I'm on page three of six. Where are you? I'm on J.
I'm on the first page of that particular ordinance. It goes all the way down to the bottom, and then we've got attachment one, and we've got attachment two that the county attorney explained. Just go all the way down where it says recommendation option one. Then we have the attachments, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, which attachment?
So I'm looking at, I'm trying to verify that we are voting on attachment two that remove the language that says the county was permitted to place a lien on any property that the property owner owned, rather than the property that has the code enforcement issue.
All right. What's the answer?
So the only difference between attachment one is attachment one removes the language that allows a lien to be placed on personal or other real property of a violator. Staff is recommending that the board, under option one, adopt attachment two, which retains the existing language in the code that currently allows a lien to attach to personal property or other real property of a violator. That's currently in the code. But it was raised as a concern at the last meeting, and the direction was to bring it back without that. So we're laying out both of those options for the board to make that policy call.
So we are, so what's before the board? We are amending that language that's excluding the ability of the county to place a lien on personal property or other property, other than the violating property.
That's attachment one. That's correct.
That's attachment one.
Correct, yeah. The agenda item says option one and attachment one, but the attachments got flipped. That's what I was referencing earlier, so I just want to make sure you're looking at the right version that, while we're talking about it, and so that you know that if you approve option one, you're actually approving the version in attachment two.
So it maintains the status quo?
Attachment, for the sole, for the sole issue of whether to allow personal or other real property to attach, but that's really not the purpose of why we brought it to begin with. It was all the other things I talked about, allowing someone to request an additional hearing before a lien or a fine is assessed to challenge whether a violation occurred or whether the amount of a lien before anything is actually assessed, which is not currently in your code. Also, to again allow, to extend the timeframe for the nuisance abasement board for someone to file an appeal from 15 days to 30 days. You know, again, we're extending it for people, giving them more time. And then basically changing the date that a fine begins to accrue for a repeat violator. The statute says that the violation or the violation starts to, or the fine for the violation starts to accrue upon the date that the violation is validated. That's what the state statute says. We want to make our code consistent with state statute. It currently says that it's from the date the repeat violator is notified, and so it's inconsistent with state statute. We want to bring that for consistency. We want to change, make that change.
Hold on, Commissioner Proctor. I've got three people ahead of you in the queue.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Oh, is it still with you?
I hadn't, I hadn't finished.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah, I had a couple of more questions for, for the county attorney. One of my concerns, my first concern, is the initial hearing that's called by the board administrator for the code enforcement board, I don't see where the property owner is even given notice of that initial hearing. Is that intentional or is that consistent with state law that they not be given notice of that initial hearing?
Oh, no, they get notice. They are given notice by certified mail at least 20 days.
But it's, I don't see it in this section here at all.
It's, it's there. I mean...
I'm looking at hearing procedure, Section 6-32. Administrator may call the code enforcement board hearing, da-da-da-da-da, and at that hearing, they can set future hearings, or they can conduct a code compliance hearing at least every, every two months. But nowhere in there do I see initially where the property owner is given notice. Now, after they're determining violation, I see where they're given notice by certified mail, but not, I don't see before.
That's because this is just an excerpt of the code. This isn't the entire provision related to the code enforcement board process. This only pertains to that proposed second hearing that we're talking about that would be new. But, but I can assure you that everybody gets notice of every hearing before a hearing is held if, if it's been asserted that they have violated the code and that the code enforcement board is going to take up that issue at a code enforcement board hearing.
Okay, so, Ms.?
Yes, ma'am.
So this particular provision deals with the hearing after a violation has occurred.
After the initial finding. Yes, after the initial finding, and what this does is it actually gives them a second bite at the apple to request another hearing to, to again say, I'm, we're not in violation or the amount of the, the fine is wrong, or, you know, to assert that, that there is any sort of an issue before a fine or lien is assessed. So this gives them, again, a second bite at the apple.
Okay. And my last, last question and concern, Madam County Attorney, is once a determination has been made that there is a violation, the property owner is given 20 days, he's notified by certified mail, and given 20 days, the language says, from the date of the notice and not from the date of receipt of the certified mail. And we know certified mail can linger around for 10, 15, 20 days. So that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, the problem for staff is, and I don't want to call it the U.S. Postal Service, but it is very common for us to just not get proof of return receipt. And sometimes that takes months to get something. Sometimes we never get proof of return receipt, certified mail. So they could get it late, but again, it's not uncommon. The code enforcement board, someone could come to them after the fact and say, hey, I got this late. They can ask for a continuance if they do that. If the board's already taken action, they can ask them to pause on that. They can request an extension of time to come into compliance. I can tell you, in practice, the code enforcement board really does try to work with people because what they want is for people just to come into compliance to address the complaint that many times these people's neighbors have filed against them. I mean, that's, they really try to work with people. So it's imperfect for sure, but that's the way it's written, and that's why.
I appreciate that. The only thing that bothers me is this directional language that it says the violator shall, didn't say may, shall have 20 days. And that might be some flexibility on the part of the board, but having represented a lot of clients where we have to look at, at the dates and look at whether or not we fall within the parameters of those days, it just gives me concern that property owners are going to be adversely affected by that language.
Well, again, and that's existing language. That's how they operate now. And the problem with putting may in there as opposed to shall is that creates uncertainty for staff. I mean, because that's how they...
That's directed for staff. I see what you're saying.
That's how they know whether to schedule something or not, just even for a hearing. So I do understand your, your concern though and why you raise that issue. And just so you know, Section 6-36 of the code is what addresses and notices, to your first question that you had. It says, "All notices required by this article shall be provided to the alleged violator by certified mail returner receipt requested," or there is another option, "by hand delivery by the sheriff, code inspector, or other persons designated." So they, they sometimes try to use hand delivery when it's feasible and they can do that. But code enforcement people do not go on people's personal property many times. That's not permissible. That's why they use certified mail a lot when they can, and when they don't have the option of hand delivery.
And that's Section 6-30, which is consistent. We're not amending that.
We're not amending that. That still applies. And again, every alleged violator would get notice before any hearing is held.
Thank you, Mr.?
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue, followed by Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am good with keeping the language as I move because the, I recently read through a year's worth of county code enforcement cases for another reason. And one thing that pleasantly surprised me is so much of the, our code enforcement decisions, our board is quite lenient. A lot of the actions are coming back and saying, well, I didn't get notice, or well, turns out getting this fixed took longer. Can you wait? Can you waive it? Often, the exposure we get, or I'll speak for myself, get to code enforcement is a constituent calling to complain about a neighbor that is out of, out of code, or they don't like the way, how many cars are in their yard, or whatever it is, for example, and they hope they're out of code. And, and we, we don't push or deny that for our office. We just tell the person calling, here's how you file it. And then we just file, follow that case through to keep them informed. And it's a, it's a slow process in that folks get a lot of time to fix it, and the, our code enforcement board that we appointed is, is quite accommodating. Now, it gets confused because this originally came up and then with, way back when, and then we started asking more questions that we saw it, so there's more things come up with it. But the way I look at this now is, and support the change suggested by staff, is from the, from the current in-place rules and ordinance, what we're changing here is how many times people can come back and get another hearing. And whereas it comes to the language we've questioned now about attaching liens to people's other real estate and personal property, is this is what gives me comfort, because I never want us to do something that can make someone's primary residence in, at risk of being no longer their primary residence. And that's not what we do. We do not attach liens to people's primary residence. Is that correct?
A lien may be attached, but we can never foreclose.
We can't...
So the lien just sits there on the property?
So we don't foreclose anyone's primary residence. This language is talking about people's other property. That's by definition, not a primary residence. And again, our code enforcement board is, their posture seems to be, we want to get things cleared up and fixed. We don't want to collect the fees. That's just a way to try to get it cleared up. And so from the current standard, we're not increasing penalties. We're not making it harder for people to get accommodations who have had code complaints against them. And we are not adding anything that adversely affects someone's personal, private property. So I support this based on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was in the queue from before, but I just want to say I'm supportive of the, of the option.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Point of clarification, the second, the proposal on a motion on the floor makes the changes that we originally asked for when we, when we sent it back to, to staff.
Option one, which is attachment two, would make all the proposed changes, but it would retain the current language that allows us to lien personal or other real property of a violator.
Is that what we asked for?
No. But that is our recommendation. So we brought you back two, two different versions. One that takes it out, which is attachment one, related to option two. And then we have attachment two, which retains the language under option one.
Okay. What's the motion on the floor?
I think that motion is for staff recommendation, option one.
That retains the...
Which is outlined in attachment two.
Okay. So I remember last time we had this conversation, there was a big conversation around that one piece, and that's why we sent it back. But now we're going with staff recommendation, which is to, I'm going to vote against motion on the floor. We did all that work. It says staff to the table to take that piece out because we, we felt really strongly about that, and then we bring it back, and now we're back to where we were. Because this is the original language that we had, that you had with the first time, correct, Madam Attorney?
Yeah, it's a continued public hearing. So we're just laying out all the options for you, but of course, policy of the board, whatever your will is.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're bringing home...
I feel like we're gonna, I'm disappointed. The notice issue is a due process issue, and I realize I'm at a disadvantage because you all are working with computers and I'm working with sheets of paper. But the 6-3C is not referenced in attachment number two. And I have looked for the notice issue because the issue for me is in subsection J, Madam Attorney, under your attachment two, that gets down there and says, "Upon receipt of the affidavit of noncompliance, in confirmation that the violator waived the right to request a hearing to contest then the validity of the fine amount and the imposition of a lien." My question is, how is this determined? If the person has not received nothing, what you going by to know that they waived it? Do they send in a letter, "I hereby, me, Rick Minor, I waive my rights to this right here"? Simply that you didn't get any response, then that's a waiver. That right there is cloudy and it's not clear, and we really ought to know what constitutes the waiver that the staff determines before they set a price and determine what the lien amount should be, and then they impose the lien. And then the chairman executes an order imposing the lien, and then a certified copy of an order of the imposition of the fine is recorded in the public records. And this remains as a permanent state of bondage that people cannot at some point sell their homes because Leon County is blocking the transfer. And we don't have any language that allows a waiver, a relaxation, an understanding of circumstances. There's no flex. And that right there is dead wrong. And all these people with green shirts on know the value of mercy, forgiveness, second chance. And even if the board wanted to waive at some point, say, well, we understood that they lost their job, we understood that they sleeping in the car they didn't have, and they should be empowered to take that lien off the book by the same order or some process. We, this thing is not ready. It's just not game-ready until we have armed this same board with a possibility of withdrawing the lien and being able to look at the human, human being circumstances of ordinary, regular people. In your review of the last year of measures, I pondered to know the people who appeared, were those households earning above $43,000 a year? were those households earning above $43,000 a year? Were they households that earned less than 43? Sociologically, ending up in this position, more often than not, the weight of it falls upon people who have less. And I believe that our government, we're being too adamant, and we ought to give the code board some process to withdraw that lien. Because right now, county attorney, if I get a call from constituents and say, "Proctor, we can't. We trying to sell our trailer. We can't." Why? Code enforcement, lien, and she can't do anything. There's just nothing, zero she can't do until it's satisfied. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Point of information.
Sure.
So once a lien attaches to the property, fines start to accrue. And then ultimately, over time, if the fine isn't paid, or if they don't request a reduction and pay it, or whatever, a lien will attach. We have had cases, actually, where people have come and said, "Hey, there's this amount of this lien on this property. Will you work with us to reduce it?" Once a lien attaches, it's no longer under the jurisdiction of the code enforcement board. It's then under the jurisdiction of the county. And in fact, the county has worked with people to resolve those issues, specifically in the context of the sale of property. So we actually do address those sorts of concerns.
This is very onerous. It's unneeded. It should have stated explicit language for the withdrawing of liens. And more importantly, even this board, the Board of County Commissioners, don't get to listen to... We're not an appellate process for people to come to. And if anyone should have some say if we wanted to withdraw a lien, I think the Board of County Commissioners should be subject as a reviewer of these matters, and we're not. So it's very, very onerous to the victims of liens. I believe that the notice issue should be clarified. It's not. I don't understand, how do you determine whether the receipt of an affidavit of noncompliance? Or I get that, the confirmation that the violator... I mean, how do you confirm that the violator waived the right to request a hearing? That's not clear to me. But anyway, we've gnawed on this bone, and I thank the board and I thank county attorney for looking at this measure. So with the option that's on the table now, Madam County Attorney, is it specifically... Because I got a little confused in the last exchange with you and Commissioner Maddox. With the motion on the floor now, does this maintain the status quo, or does it limit the lien to the one property that's in question? Or does it apply?
It maintains the status quo, so you would not vote in favor of this motion. You would instead vote for option two, which is reflected in attachment one.
So in terms of my thinking and what I've been saying, option two is closer to what I've been saying?
That's correct.
All right. What's on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Option one.
Chairman, I move option two.
Oh, we got a substitute motion for option two. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Cummings. We are on staff recommendation, option two, attachment one. Let's land this plane.
We're no longer on staff recommendation.
Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. So option two, attachment one, not staff recommendation. Commissioner Caban, can you close it out for us, and then we'll take a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just asking for, it just got cleared up, point of clarification of what motion was on the floor. I plan to support Commissioner Proctor's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner Proctor for option two, and a second from Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Got two noes. Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor passes five to two as Commissioner Proctor's motion. Okay, Commissioners, that ends our public hearing. We are now back on item 21, which is the Cajum item. Now, I would inform you that we have 20 speaker cards for citizens on non-adjourned items after this item. So, you know, just keep that in your back pocket as you discuss this item. So we will, we've heard from those folks. I'm going to let Vince, the county administrator, is going to wrap up the county's perspective, and then we'll go to discussion. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very, very quickly, too, I know we took a little break from the item, but just to sort of summarize and to sort of emphasize a couple of points that were made in the interest of helping the board in your discussion. Couple of things that we heard in the presentation and in the comments, one of which, and Cajum should know from a staff standpoint, we join Mark Hendrickson. We really appreciate all of their work. And it's important to note that we heard some human stories tonight. And I thought I should just point out from staff's standpoint that we are a direct service delivery organization. We do a little policy analysis on the side. But Jelani, if you raise your hand back there, Jelani and his housing team work every day, all day, with clients in our affordable housing programs. So we get it, and we understand the story. Another thing I heard was, do something. What have we done? Of course, in the analysis that you have before you, it clearly demonstrates what we've done, and we fully intend to do more. And again, just over the past few years, the county has a direct spend of about $5.8 million in direct funding authorization of approximately $183 million in bond financing. We've secured over $125 million in additional federal, state, and private financing that will result in 1,200 new affordable housing units over the next 12 to 18 months. That is a record that we've not seen in our past history. So you're doing a lot. Can we do more? We absolutely can do more, and we're trying to do more. Another thing I heard is dedicate a funding source. We have a dedicated funding source. It's called SHIP. It's everyone's dedicated funding source for counties and cities in the state of Florida. We have, as you have heard, $400,000 in the current budget, unallocated currently for projects like the ones that have been proposed. And we think that money, that money, we expect to grow to $500,000 next year. And as you heard, too, we'll be working very hard through the legislative process to get additional capacity with SHIP, and we'll be joining counties and cities from across the state in doing so. The next thing I heard was about reallocating the Surtax, and what would that harm? What would that be? That would be about four projects next year. But let me talk a little bit about those four projects. That may not sound like a lot, and those projects, they vary in terms of where they're located, what district, what neighborhood they serve, that sort of thing. And we can give you the list of the projects, and they probably won't mean a whole lot to you. They'll talk about the road miles to be resurfaced and that sort of thing. But that's a very dynamic list. Four projects, and the way that we constantly monitor those projects is based on engineering data. It's based on accident data. And we were constantly reassessing and stretching those dollars to put them on resurfacing projects where they're needed the most. And the thing about resurfacing dollars, Commissioners, is that a $500,000 resurfacing project, when you defer it for even a couple of years, could become a $5 million project when you're no longer resurfacing but rebuilding a roadbed. So again, just all things to take into consideration. Incentives, Commissioner Caban, last time around, was asking about incentives. That's why you heard Shinkton's emphasis on live local. Again, those incentives are up to 100% property tax abatement on these eligible projects, and immediately going to the highest zoning designation in your code. That's about all the incentives you could provide for such projects. And while we will not be receiving property taxes, of course, we will still maintain our obligation to serve those projects with infrastructure and other services in the county. So that's why we presented to you at the end that we have the opportunity for a budget workshop upcoming in a few months, where again, we could sort of synthesize all this, see where we are with SHIP. And I think something that is a point that probably should be made, the biggest worst-case scenario that we could probably commit here is to allocate a pot of money that could not be used for a gap financing project that may come down the pike. That's what you heard from Mark Hendrickson, essentially. You can remedy that, should the board decide to do so, in your budget workshops. If you want to use general revenue, this board determines, again, what our budget priorities are. General revenue will be a much more flexible, much more fungible source to address those things. Again, you may, we may allocate an amount of this Surtax dollars. We may have a gap financing project come down, and we may not be able to utilize those dollars because of the limitations on the Surtax. Commissioners, that's all from me. I just wanted to hit the high points and hand it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. So we're going to go into discussion. I've got Commissioner... And by the way, the deliberators are working again. So I've got Commissioner Maddox was first, and then I've got Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Minor. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and we need a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we, that I spoke of earlier, that we would have HFA work with Cajum, as well as any other stakeholders that can be identified, to invite, one, look at the current Pinellas proposal, along with the needs that we have as a county, and come back with proposals, the Pinellas proposal, as well as any other proposal, that might be right for us to consider. That would be part of my motion. The other thing is that we will secure additional funds, funding opportunities, and also changes to the SHIP to increase our resources to address affordable housing as a part of our budgeting process. County Administrator spoke about us maybe looking at, during our budget workshops, how we may be able to use some of the SHIP dollars, as well as other dollars we have, to allocate towards affordable housing. That is my motion. Then I have a few comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion. Did staff get that motion?
We did.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We got a second from Commissioner Caban. Now we're back to Commissioner Maddox.
All right. Thank you. So here's the thing, and I talked to Robert during our, and Commissioner Thiel during our break. I am familiar with the Pinellas County proposal. No Ken Welch, who was the mayor of St. Pete, as well as other county commissioners in Pinellas County. And I'm not totally sold on it as a remedy for what we deal with here. And the reason I asked for more discussions on it is to see if we could come up with something more original for Leon County. The reason that the Pinellas proposal was picked is because it's the only model that you have. Once we allocate those dollars to allocate, that's it. So if we choose to do what Pinellas chose, is doing, that's what we're doing. But who's to say that Cajum, HFA, and other stakeholders can't sit down to address this proposal, or to address affordable housing in a more holistic way? And so I'm not, I'm not saying today that I don't support the Pinellas County proposal, and I'm not saying that I don't support us putting more dollars towards affordable housing, because I actually do. What I'm saying is that I'm not, or what I'm saying is that I would like for us to take more time to see if we can come up with a model that's unique to Leon County, that then people who are looking to deal with affordable housing can then look and say, "Well, Pinellas is doing this, and Leon County is doing this. Well, maybe the Leon County proposal works better for our county than the Pinellas proposal." I just don't want to say because Pinellas is doing it and it works for them, then we're just going to take what they're doing. Because I mean, it could work. Some of it will work, but it doesn't address every issue that we have. I don't think so. So one of the things I heard is, Commissioner Maddox, we've been waiting on this for three years, and they were sitting here today, and you're saying, "Have more conversation and come back with not only the proposal, the Pinellas proposal was something different." Well, as I understand it, you hadn't been waiting three years with the county. Since you walked into our chambers, since you walked into Blueprint, the county vote at Blueprint was for us to allocate those dollars. You walked in here, you asked us to look at your proposal and tell us what you thought, or tell you what we thought. So really, you hadn't been dealing with us for three years. What is three to six more months, more conversation, to see if we can come up with something that's not like Pinellas, that's unique specifically to Leon County? And if you can't come up with anything, then we'll chew on the Pinellas thing, and we can move forward on it. But why do we have to do this today when we've been waiting for three years, when we can wait six more months, have the conversation, and maybe come back with something that's unique to Leon County, that's better than anything the state has ever seen? Somebody said earlier that the state, I think it was Mr. Hendrick, said, "The state may not be dealing with this. The city may not be dealing with this, but you have an opportunity to deal with it." Well, I want to make the most of my opportunity to deal with it. And I don't think just by, because this is the one we got, this is the only thing we got, I don't think that's taking full advantage of us dealing with it. You have a board up here who wants, who wants to put more money towards affordable housing. I told a young lady earlier, she says, "Should the crowd stay?" I said, "Well, look, I don't think this thing fails today. Worst-case scenario, there's more conversation, and it comes back. Best-case scenario for you guys is that it passes. But to me, if it passes today, I don't think that's the best-case scenario. Because all we're doing is taking something that worked somewhere else, and we're trying to make it work for us when we could, we could probably find something better. There's a lot of minds in this room, and in this county, in this city, that I bet you, if you put them all together, we could come up with something that's better than what Pinellas did. If you guys have no interest in doing that, so be it. But I do, and I'm hoping that we can wait a little bit, have a little more conversation, and come up with something different. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I've got Commissioner O'Keefe, then Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Caban. Proctor, you want to go in after that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. All right. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank all the people who have come to the multiple meetings, especially the folks who came to bravely tell their story in asking us to do something that's... I was about to say, a brave thing, but it shouldn't be brave. We're put up here to be leaders, and because we have not led in the way that our community demands, you have led, and it's our time to follow your lead, we can at least do that. It was said earlier, "But for the grace of God, there go I." And that is something I think, whenever I meet somebody who is living outside, everybody is one medical emergency, one lost job, one rent increase away from living in a car, living on the street. I'm going to tell you about my first day in the office here after I got elected. And Gary Zierin was my aide. He had been the aide for my predecessor for eight or nine years. And I think I gave him a question he never heard before. That night before, some of my friends who live in their car were over on the south side, and an incident happened away from them that brought the police down, interacting with them. And you know what happens when you don't have income and you live in your car? You don't keep up your insurance. And so you don't keep up your registration. And so that person was in jail overnight, and they called me and said, "I'm scared. I don't know what to do." And so Gary's first question from his new commissioner was, "When is the first hearing, and what courtroom is it in, so we can go help our friend find out where to go?" We heard about people who live in, who have worked in this courthouse, who live in their car. My close friend is a senior, and he is losing where he lives now. And he, I went with him, with the help of our Essential Library Initiatives, our caseworker, and got the best list we could of affordable housing and affordable senior living for this person who qualifies for many on a fixed income. And we spent days going, me chauffeuring him around from place to place, because many of our places, you have to go in person to get the application and return it. What do people who don't have a friend, who will take days off to drive them everywhere to try to apply for affordable housing, that they will be on a waitlist for? We have done a lot. We are doing a lot. 1,200 units is not nothing. Ship funding is not nothing. Sale funding is not nothing. If we won $7 million from HUD, that would not be nothing. But if you didn't know, the federal administration just froze all financial assistance, including HUD grants. So I don't think we should be planning for that. It'd be nice if it would come, but put one thing in the hand and one in the other, and I don't think we should count on that one. So Cajum, it was brought up earlier in the last discussion. We don't want to do this without, we shouldn't be the only ones to have to do it, and we should talk to the city. Well, I didn't run for office, and I didn't get voted in to ask the city's permission to meet a need of our community.
Amen.
Cajum started, Cajum started going to the city for multiple years and amending their request, denied, denied, denied. Then what they were told to do is go to Blueprint. They took the objections, they incorporated it into a change, and they went to Blueprint. And they were told, "No." Now, everyone on here happened to support it, but that didn't get us over the hurdle. So then they came to the county, and they were told, they were advised to come to the county by our mayor. That was a good suggestion, because we stand here after other local governments and joint governments- governments have chosen to say no instead of finding a way to say yes. We are the last local government to be asked to show a little leadership and say yes to this proposal, because we heard from somebody who is a medical professional, who is and has been homeless and living in their cars. When I'm in the hospital, the person putting an IV in my arm, I do not sit well with them living in their car and working double shifts to pay rent. We heard all of the specific technical objections, and we do a lot. We do a lot. But if we want to think together and put our heads together as a commission and a government, it is not time after a community organization has thought through a proposal to bring it to us. That's our job long in advance and long after this. Today, we're considering this proposal from Cajum that has been based on a large community input from over 20 multiple faith organizations and congregants. This is not some small group who just decided, "Hey, we need something." This is the most thoughtful, thought-out, long-term, apolitical, community advocacy organization I've seen recently for housing, and I see no reason that we shouldn't learn to start finding a way to say yes instead of finding ways to say no. If we want to come back and do something different, we do. We do. Whether we vote for this or not, Cajum should not be the reason that we bring back workshop items about how we can do something that worked for Leon County. We've done been responsible for that, and we will continue to be. But now is the time to say yes to this, period. Thank you, Cajum. These people have worked a long time, and I'm asking my colleagues for your leadership in putting this program into place, giving it up or down, and then we still come back and we put our heads together for every new creative solution, because that's what we should always and continue will do. Thank you.
You propose in a substitute motion.
I'll make a substitute motion to accept the report and direct staff to institute the program as proposed by Cajum.
Second. All right. We've got a substitute motion and a second, and Commissioner Minor, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank the Cajum members for being here and for their work on this. Cajum has done an excellent job studying the affordable housing issue and trying to work to find a solution with both the city and the county. You know, I have to say, after the last couple of years, I've sat down with Cajum more often than my own mother. And it just goes to show for how much -- how dedicated you all have been in reaching out to your elected officials. If I have an issue that I want to have addressed, I want to have Cajum on my side. I've also -- I've got some beneficial experience helping people in need of housing. I used to serve as a board member of the shelter, the old one on West Tennessee, 15 and 20 years ago. I used to be the CEO of Second Harvest, which at the time I was there, worked with 135 partners to provide 10 million meals a year to people in need. And then, every year, I participate in Big Ben Continuum of Cares Annual Point and Time Count. That's where we go out to the community and interview people who are on the street to get a good sense for a snapshot of how many people are homeless so that we can draw down federal funds. In fact, even this morning, I was volunteering for the pit count and walking around downtown with case managers and other volunteers, interviewing people that are homeless. I have supported Cajum's concept based on the Pinellas Penny for Land Assembly, and you know that I have, and you know that many of us have. You know, in May of last year, we all, I think we all voted to make it as a Blueprint project. Unfortunately, in Blueprint, you need the city side to vote as well. I've given this a tremendous amount of thought. I think that what we've talked about today with Shinkton Lamy and others is the way that the land program is set up. The restrictions are there where you can only use it for land, only use it for land, because the fund comes from infrastructure funds at Blueprint. I had a quick question related to this, and I don't know if the county administrator could answer this or someone from Cajum itself, but does the Cajum plan only allow the development of low-income housing? In other words, would the Cajum plan support development of mixed-income housing as part of the project?
Shinkton's got you. We need your mic on.
Specifically, would set aside units for extremely low and very low.
Yes.
Those dollars would have to be dedicated specifically for extremely low and very low only.
As we've talked about, could you have a 100-unit development with 40% low income and then have that portion, prorated portion of land be using Cajum funds? It's a mixed --
Mr. Dial, please, don't do that. Mr. Shinkton, go ahead and try to answer the question, please.
Well, the issue is the fact that the way the projects work, the developments work, Commissioner, is that those set-asides are already set based on tax credits and sale and other project and other funding sources that those projects receive. Those are the ones that help to set aside how many units will be provided for low income as well as very low income and extremely low income. Those additional dollars would not get us more affordable housing units. Those units are already established by the funding that those projects are receiving through the programs that we talked about.
So, to paraphrase back to you, what that means is that when these set-asides are codified, the funding already has to be in place before that mix of low income to higher income is determined. Is that correct?
Those are -- they have to be set as you're going to closing, because that lets the financiers know what is going to be a mix of how many -- how much dollars you're going to get through subsidies or through actual rent, your rent rolls.
Could you at that point use funds from the Cajum plan with revenues produced by the Blueprint funds that have been designated for that?
I'm sorry.
So, okay, I spoke with Brenda Williams, the Tennessee Housing Authority. She told me that it's very difficult, almost impossible, to get financing for just a low-income housing development project, because it's just not financially viable. She told me, and I asked permission for me to convey this to everyone here, she said, "A project that is only low income would not be financed by the banks. The banks would never accept it." So, my point that I'm trying to make, it'd be very difficult for the Pinellas land program to work with just low-income housing projects that are 100% low-income units. The Cajum program can work if it's allowed to be part of a mixed-income development where the portion of low income --
But, Commissioner, the issue is that's how our projects work now. They do that now, Commissioner. And the thing about it is, and with Pinellas, Pinellas does not require for projects to provide more extremely low and very low income. That is not what they do. Their project, their dollars specifically do what we do. Our ship rental development project provides assistance with gap financing. That's what they do with Pinellas County. They're not set making these -- and we have this. We talked, we met with the executive director of Pinellas County and HFA, because they run it through them. They do not require, as what is Cajum's proposal, that they set aside more units than is already set by the state for extremely low and very low. They do not do that.
What I'd like to propose is something that I think gives us greater flexibility. With the Cajum plan, as it's been, as my understanding of it goes, we all know per state statute, the Blueprint infrastructure funds, 20% of it, which would go to the Cajum concept, could only be used for a land acquisition. We know that. That's well-established. But we also know that the county's doing a tremendous amount of work. They really are doing a tremendous amount of work, as our county administrator has said, as Shinkton Lamy has said, on producing more affordable housing units. It's just a fact. We're doing an incredible amount of job, a credible job. The Cajum plan would be another tool in our arsenal. It wouldn't be the silver bullet that would solve affordable housing in Leon County. I don't think anyone is suggesting that. It would be one tool of many. What I suggest we do is, instead of using the Blueprint funds that are only restricted to land acquisition, what I'd suggest we do is use general revenue funds, supplement that with our ship levels. Right now, it's at $400,000. We expect it next year to be at $500,000. What I'd recommend we do is contemplate whether or not we want to add to the $500,000 of ship revenue funds next year. Add $5,000, $100,000 to that, making it $1 million of funds that we could use for ship-like gap financing. That's a lot more flexibility than this program from Cajum might be, right? Because with Cajum, you can only use it for land acquisition. With this, by supplementing ship funds with additional money from GR, you're actually able to use it for gap financing, rehabilitation, construction. You can also extend the land use restrictions that would be adopted on low-income homes, as Mark said before, from 50 years to perpetuity. You can't do that under the Cajum use of dollars. You can do it with this idea of supplementing ship. Does that make sense? What I'd like to do is, and Commissioner Maddox touched on this, I think we get the biggest bang for our buck by taking ship, working as we come up with the budget for next year, identifying an amount that we want to do to supplement ship for. That gives us the most flexibility. We have the ability then to use all of that money, whether it's $1 million, because we're using $500,000 for ship, $500,000 from GR, to use gap financing. Because as we've heard, a lot of developers in Leon County don't have land use or acquisition of land as a barrier to development. That's not the thing that is an issue here in Leon County. It might be in Pinellas, where you're confined to the waterline, the coastline, and land is a premium there. Here in Leon County, it's just not a strong barrier. So, I think we all, we've all stated, we've demonstrated, we all care very much about affordable housing. I talk, it's probably one of the top one or two issues I deal with on a daily basis, the need for affordable housing. I think this idea here gives us more flexibility. The trick, though, is to make sure we get the funding that we need, right? Well, just stating it out there, right? What I suggest is that we put something on the books now as a placeholder for when we have budget discussions. Let's save $500,000. We add that to the $500,000 for ship to give us $1 million. Now, what will happen, what will happen is that we'll then have a discussion, you all will probably be here then, where we talk about whether or not we want the $500,000 added to ship. And we're going to have to decide whether or not we can, you know, what are we going to trade off, right? What do we give up in our budget to make sure we get $500,000 added to ship?
So, that's a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
It's a whole different proposal.
No, no, no. Commissioner Minor, so, Commissioner Proctor, please, we have a substitute motion on the table that's entirely different from what you're suggesting, which was closer to the original motion. So, we are going to have to disperse of the substitute motion first so that we can, you know, if we pass the substitute motion, we pass it, we don't, we don't. But what you're talking about, Commissioner Minor, is really more in line with Commissioner Maddox.
I know, yeah.
Mr. Chair, on point.
Sure.
So, this is what I'm talking about. You got the Pinellas proposal. I think you got a great idea, right? But even if we make that decision right here on the spot, it's a concept that you have in your head that we have not seen on paper.
True.
I agree with it. It sounds great, but we haven't seen it on paper. I believe it's short-sighted. I know you guys want it to happen right now, but why? Why can't we just take these proposals, which is a very good one? I sat there and talked to you, Robert, and you said it yourself. The Pinellas proposal does not conquer the whole deal. Maybe you said the reason that you chose the Pinellas proposal was because you were dealing with Blueprint dollars, and Blueprint dollars could only be used for infrastructure and land. But if there is another pot of money that you could use that could address both sides, then that would be better for everybody. Why aren't we thinking about this? Why are we pushing for something when we can really sit here, use both sides of the pot, really come up with something good, and push this forward in a way that conquers and deals with everything? Everything!
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Minor, let's wrap up, please.
Let me wrap up. Commissioner Cummings. So, Commissioner Maddox, I hear your point. What this would do is not create something new. It basically uses the existing functionality that provided by ship. So, it's additional money to add to ship. We use all the flexibility that ship gives us, gap financing, we named it already, all of that, all those additional flexibility that we have that we would not have with the Cajum plan with the Pinellas land acquisition dollars. So, it gives us much more ability to work with developers in many more scenarios of how they might be able to have gap financing to develop affordable housing. So, it's not creating something new. It's basically piggybacking off the bank of ship. Mr. Chairman, I hear you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioners, we can't circle back too many times, okay? So, Commissioner Cummings has not had a shot. Commissioner Caban is next, and then Commissioner Proctor, and then I'll have some thoughts. And we are still on the substitute motion. So, we may have to have a whole other round of this if we go back to the original motion. So, Commissioner Cummings, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I try to abbreviate my comments.
Take as much time as you need.
As much as possible. But first of all, I want to certainly thank the members of the Capitol Area Justice Ministry, you know, just for their care and concern and compassion for the least of these. I've met with them many times over the last couple of years, and I feel like I know Reverend Houston and Reverend Jones and Ms. Pitter and all of you guys, that you just pour your heart and soul into this issue of affordable housing and homelessness. And I certainly share the sentiment, especially when we think about our children and our families who are living in cars. We heard some anecdotal information tonight in reference to that, and it's present right now. So, we are all concerned. We are bothered by the deficit of affordable housing for the low-income and the very, very low-income individuals. But, you know, I applaud you for your consistency, your contiguity, your perseverance, and to address a major issue in our community. And of course, I've got on my green as well tonight. I don't have the T-shirt, but I have on my green because I share your compassion, Reverend Jones. But I also, Mr. Chair, I want to thank our county staff, our county administrators, because they did exactly what we asked. We asked them to bring back an agenda item on the Capitol Area Justice Ministry's proposal. We asked them to do that, and they did. And I appreciate that. They did a good job. I think Shinkton and Mr. Henderson, for their diligence and for the information they provided to us. But as an elected official, I think as elected officials up here, I think we have to do our due diligence, even in supporting the Capitol Area Justice Ministry. I think we have to look at impacts, short term and the long term. The proposed funding source, 20% of our Blueprint allocation, I've looked at it, and while the report didn't give all of the adverse effects, clearly our county administrator pointed out some of the pits that we could fall in if we, and some of the dangerous situations that could be created on our roadways in the counties with us older people driving, with our young newly driver's license, children and grandchildren. And so, there could be a disservice, I think, to the citizens if we tried to cut back on our road maintenance. The county administrator indicated, you know, a simple road paving that's left unaddressed for a year or two could turn into a multimillion-dollar project. So, I'm concerned about pulling allocated funds from one source to try to resolve a problem in another area. So, that concerns me to the point where I think what we need to do, Commissioners, as has been suggested, is look at alternative funding sources. And I appreciate the recommendation, but I think we can look at other funding sources through the county. We can analyze them. We can look at -- through the county, we can analyze them, we can look at whether or not, from a board standpoint, it would be less intrusive to look at other sources. And I'm just concerned, Mr. Chair, that this might be too in-depth for us to go into detail right now, to the extent that we need to, to the extent that the citizens of Leon County and our members of the Capital Area Justice Ministry deserves. I'm concerned that perhaps maybe a workshop dedicated to this issue, I mean, affordable housing, homelessness is a major issue in Leon County, and I think it merits perhaps more attention than we can give it at our county commission meeting here tonight. One of the things I don't think we've ever done, Mr. Chair, is I don't think we've ever really analyzed the Pinellas County proposal. I think we asked staff to bring back an agenda item, but like Commissioner Maddox said, I don't think we really scrutinized that proposal to see if it would fit into Leon County, much less whether or not we, as a majority on the commission, want to adopt it as a program here in Leon County. I think it would be a disservice to the Capital Area Justice Ministry and to the citizens of Leon County if we, as elected individuals, didn't more closely scrutinize that proposal. I mean, we could tweak it a little, or we might, in the final analysis, determine that, hey, it is appropriate for us to specifically adopt that program here in Leon County, but I think it merits us specifically looking at it, doing our due diligence on it. That, in addition, to look at other funding sources that would be available perhaps to address homelessness and affordable housing in Leon County, I think would go a long way in us addressing what we're trying to do tonight in this meeting. And I think one of the things we have to remember, that in the meantime, the county is addressing affordable housing. For the last three, four years, the county has invested direct funding of close to $6 million into affordable housing. When we have developers or the Tallahassee Housing Authority or other entities come for support, gap funding, the county has always provided it. And I think Mr. Lambie indicated that hopefully next year, we might receive more ship funding. So I just believe, Commissioners, that we really need a little bit more discussion. I think we need a little bit more input, and I think we would do a great service to this beautiful group that's come before us tonight. We would do a great service for a homeless community, those individuals that are suffering from the lack of affordable housing, for us to delve into it and come up with an informed decision. I think tonight, we're not totally informed, but I think if we look at other funding sources, look at alternatives, maybe to the Pinellas project, and in the final analysis, we might agree that what Capital Area Justice Ministry has come forward is the best solution for Leon County. But I think we need to look at it first and suss it, Mr. County Chair. And I think in the final analysis, we would all be proud of the decision that we made with the involvement of the community. So I think this is government at its best with community involvement, but I think it pushes us to make sure we're the best that we can be, and that we have made the best decision for our community, the greatest good for the greatest number. But thank you.
Thank you.
And in addition, I would certainly go back and support Commissioner Maddox's motion, a substitute motion, I believe that essentially says basically what I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you.
We've got Commissioner Caban next, and then Commissioner Proctor, and I've got you two guys, want to take another round of it, or you know? You're in the queue, just so you know. Commissioner Caban, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get started, I would like to address the county administrator on a question.
Sure.
Mr. County Administrator, if we remove 20% of our current capital improvement budget, how will that affect pedestrian safety in Leon County?
It would, I mean, the projects that we work on, some of them are, again, simply a resurfacing project, some of them are an engineering deterioration project, some of them are specifically pedestrian safety projects. And again, I've got Brent and Nefal and Charles, who's a county engineer, they could back me up on any of this and provide more details, should the board want that.
So would it be fair to say that by subtracting 20% of our capital improvement budget, that we would be defunding pedestrian safety in Leon County?
It'll have an impact, and I will tell you this, and again, we can provide specifics. If you want to talk about specific projects that are in this next year's budget that would be eliminated, we could talk about those. We've got the staff here to do that. But again, to tell you, would you feel a 20% reduction next year? Absolutely. Would you feel it quickly? Yes, you would.
Say no more, I appreciate that feedback. Before I get started, I want to say two things. One, Shinkton, your team does a damn good job, and I appreciate all the effort that you've done into putting together this item, all the research that you guys did, and the presentation that went along with it. I also want to preface this conversation by saying this, affordable housing is something that affected me personally growing up. My freshman year of college, my family foreclosed on my childhood home, and I spent the first summer of college sleeping on my sister's couch. So I can tell you firsthand that this is something that has affected me personally. But as we approach this issue, listening to some of the feedback and watching the dialogue, it's been a little frustrating, because in my head, I'm thinking, okay, are we trying to solve affordable housing? Are we trying to create more housing? Because if that's what we're trying to do, we can't do it in a way that's going to rob Peter to pay Paul. Because right now, we've heard over the last few months, residents in Leon County who've been struck by vehicles. I have parts of my district where folks drive on dirt roads. We have kids in my district that don't have sidewalks to go to school. And I'm not going to defund pedestrian safety to supply another category in our budget. That's not the way good government should work. I'm also a little frustrated here with this, because there's been projects in blueprint that are to create over 1,000 single-family homes that the same commissioners that are pushing this voted no on. So are we looking to create more affordable housing? There's some simple economics here, it's supply and demand. We need to create an environment that builds more housing. Developers in our community aren't passing on projects because they don't have the money to buy raw land to develop. That is the smallest part in development. Land acquisition is the smallest part. Developers are coming in our community right now and buying land for $4 million an acre. So I don't think that by us acquiring raw land right now, I just don't believe it's going to spur affordable housing. I just don't believe it. I fully respect and appreciate and support the spirit of what we're trying to do here, but I want to move the needle. To me, this isn't talking points, I want to create more housing. And to my opinion, the solution to do that is, we need to look at land use, we need to look at zoning, we need to have, we need to look at our building department, and we need to create a culture that folks and developers want to come in Leon County, and they want to build their projects here. Also, I'm going to point this out, has anyone looked at their property taxes the last seven years? Because if we want to make a big, if we really want to move the needle, let's look at our property taxes. Because we had this conversation in our budget workshop, and I stood here and said I think we should look at rolling back the miller's rate, and no one wanted to jump on that. And that affects everybody in this room, whether you rent, whether you own your home. So if we really want to move the needle, I think we need to have robust discussions and look at solutions, but I will not reduce funding and capital improvements when I have folks in my district who walk to school with no sidewalk, folks who drive every single day on dirt roads, I will not do that. So I appreciate the spirit of the motion, and Commissioner O'Keefe, if we have other options to look at, I'm happy to support and happy to look at it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Proctor, you're up. Commissioner Minor, you're in the queue, is that correct?
I'm good for now, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead and make your statement, and then we would like to vote on the substitute motion.
Chairman, I'm a ride or die with the motion. I realize that CAGM, I don't remember ever seeing any of them over at the Amelia Island Chamber of Commerce retreat. I know you're not those people. I realize also that you've probably not seen the chambers breakfast, and some of the more hallowed places that this board, this body, we tend to act quickly. You've heard today, I'm so glad you're here, and I wish some students from middle school was here, to hear the Leon County Board of Commissioners act for rabbits tonight, act for dogs tonight, and enact an ordinance for cats tonight. You heard that, you sat there, you watched that. It should give you some sense of what could, in our minds, the fix for cats and dogs and rabbits, our values. I'm quite sorry for you to see and feel for yourselves tonight, that people of faith and people of poverty, for many years, have been, I guess, the other least, the last, and the lost, and all of that. And frankly, identifying with those who struggle, who struggle for housing, who struggle for food, who struggle for all those things that Christ said, when I was hungry, or when I was in prison, and all of that, all those things that He posted Himself in the last question, we just tend to not, from our distance above you, see. We need to act tonight. We need to plant our sword in the dirt, and I believe that what we do tonight is plant a seed, and we, the journey of 1,000 miles begins with a single step, and that step should be taken tonight, and we can perfect and figure out how to get to the moon, and whatever next is next, Mars or someplace like that. And those things begin with a single step. That's what the community is asking us tonight, to take a step. It don't have to be perfect, a single step. And I think that, I've heard tonight on our desk, the concern about the St. Petersburg model, the model, the model. And yesterday, we gave a lot of compliments to Sika Trueblood Green for her leadership of the very young Children's Services Council. And we started with a proposal, it didn't take very long, as many years of time spent because the right people brought it to us and said, we want this measure on the ballot. Again, it's often about just how silky are your stockings? So we were able to raise and see about the needs of children across our community because the right people brought it and led the charge, and it happened. I ain't saying you're not the right people, I'm not saying that at all, but you've seen things that we've done based on Cass. Now, I believe that when we talk about St. Pete, the model itself is not the point. What these people are saying, it's the St. Pete attitude, it's the St. Pete embracement, it's the county commissioners' creativity, it's their flexibility. It's not the perfection of some model, but it is the perfecting of the willingness to act and to start somewhere. And it's sad tonight that among Florida's 67 counties, there's only one model, or one commission, that has acted to give all Floridians any kind of light, any kind of display of what can occur when hearts combined with minds and spirits. HFA man was here tonight, and he said that we've looked at it, and we have measured, and that this won't move the needle on the number of units, and blah, 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 all of that. I would stay here with you, but I got a baseball game to go to. And if you really want to know, to me, baseball is a priority over this. I'm not making these words up, you heard that. But this commission wants you to go back out and clash with that kind of mentality. That is well-spoken, their position and disposition to what you're asking. I mean, intelligence has to stand up somewhere and draw a line. And from what I heard, I would dare not seek to send you out, to be brutalized by someone who told you to your face, yeah, and if you want to know, I put baseball as my priority over this. So I don't put baseball over this, nor do I think that you have to have a perfect model. I think that what we have to have is a willingness to act, and empathy, and the creativity, and we can perfect as we step along and go forward. That's why tonight, I'm going to support, if this commissioner is willing to keep option substitute motion, I will walk, and if it does not pass, we'll see what happens then. But I pray that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I've got Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Cummings. So Commissioner Minor, be brief, we'll go ahead and vote on this substitute motion.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. So I'm not going to support the motion, the substitute motion, right now, with the intention of, should this substitute motion not prevail, having a recommendation for the next one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings? Okay.
This is my function.
No worries, no worries. All right, so we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Proctor, substitute motion to accept staff, accept the report and adopt the CAGM proposal as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. Fails, five to two. We are back on the original motion, which is Commissioner Maddox's motion. I am going to add a few comments at this point, if y'all are okay with that. I don't think we necessarily need to hammer on this too much longer. I have said all along, I've been skeptical of this plan. I think there are a lot of issues with it for Leon County. I think that we have borne that out in our discussion. I think that when our staff gives us an analysis that says this point-blank will not create more affordable units, and that this will harm an existing program, that's a big problem. Now, I think that the good news for our friends at CAGM, who I do want to commend, I told you guys at Blueprint, when I voted against this at Blueprint, for very similar reasons that I could not support the substitute motion, is that you have made this an issue at the forefront of everybody's mind. Your advocacy has elevated this issue in the eyes of the public and of the policymakers. And I don't think this is the end of the road, okay, for your proposal. I do think that Commissioner Maddox, who does this very well, articulates the idea that I can't fit in Commissioner Maddox's suit. It would look weird on me. It's tailored to him. It's tailored to him. My suit is tailored to me, well, really, off the rack, that's why it looks like this, but Commissioner Maddox would look silly in my suit. I think that we have displayed to the community our commitment to trying to work towards improving this problem. I don't think you're going to solve this problem, but we have shown our commitment to it through the numbers that we project on the screens, millions and millions of dollars. I would remind you, we have $400,000 sitting there right now that we can't do anything with. We don't have any applicants for that money. So to then start setting aside one point, however many, $2 million a year out of our road improvement budget, which Commissioner Caban captures very well, it comes at a cost, is not good public policy, in my opinion. We have a complicated process for building affordable housing. It involves all kinds of different financing mechanisms and authorities and entities, and we would essentially hamstring ourselves by doing this. I know it feels good to do this, and we can say that Pinellas County has a program that works or may not work, but to Commissioner Cummings' point, we don't really have any analysis to suggest that that model even works. I don't know, I don't know of any developers who are asking us for money right now, which I mentioned at the Blueprint meeting when we had this discussion. For me, you'd have to have a shovel-ready project that needs gap financing of a certain amount for land lease buyback right now to make that make sense to me, right now. And we don't have that, because it's a complicated process. We're trying to simplify something into a complicated process. So I think that the most prudent way forward, and again, there are other, this is rife with problems, right? The city's not involved, the city gets the same 10% allocation that we get, we're, right? Am I mistaken?
And a lot more dedicated.
Yeah, more, more money. So, you know, the county is the little government that could over here. We're trying to do the best we can with a limited budget, and the city, and Mr. Hedrick pointed this out, he sort of said no, and because five of the seven of us said yes at Blueprint, I would remind you that I did not, I think Commissioner Caban was also in the no on that, too, at Blueprint, for these same reasons. I think it's unfair to the county commission to carry that burden. But what I'm telling you is that I can support Commissioner Maddox's, what I think is a very measured approach, to say, we go through a budget workshop every year, we look at allocating funds for various issues or causes. We are, I am open to looking at this through our normal budget process, our general revenue process that Commissioner Minor outlined earlier. I think that's a prudent way to go about it. And honestly, I think, to Commissioner Maddox's point, you may get a better product, you may get a more flexible allocation of money that you can immediately deploy into actually creating new units. While I'll remind you, we are creating 158 new units at Lake Bradford Road that we just learned about yesterday at our retreat. So we are moving the needle in Leon County on very low and low-income affordable housing units, but we cannot divert funds from our road maintenance budget to do it. I think that's just irresponsible. Can we budget it through general revenue? Maybe, and I'll entertain that. And so I can support Commissioner Maddox's motion, original motion. I would ask Mr. Maddox at this time, just to frame the argument as we try to close this out, to restate your motion, and then maybe, I've got Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Maddox in the queue, Commissioner Cummings, it still says you, but not really. So, and I would like to go to Commissioner Maddox right now, Commissioner O'Keefe, let him kind of restate his motion and his intent. If I'm not mistaken, I think I can support it, and then we'll go from there. All right? Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so long ago. Madam Attorney, do you have now my motion? I said so much stuff. I can restate it, but I want to say exactly what I said last time.
I have a motion to have the HFA meet with Cajun and address the ship funding use in the upcoming budget process.
Okay. HFA would meet with Cajun and other stakeholders to look at the Pinellas proposal, as well as other potential solutions to the problem that we face with affordable housing. I would like to also include in that analysis Commissioner Minor's proposal as well, that he brought up for us. And then also wanted a budget discussion item, specifically using ship funds, as well as other revenues that we may have to deal with affordable housing. I think that was the extent of my motion. Mr. Administrator, did I miss anything?
I think you got it. If we could just get a little clarification on Commissioner Minor's add-in.
Yes, I'll give him, when he speaks, I'll give him a chance to do that. I did, Mr. Chair, if I can make a comment as well.
Yes, sir.
I got frustrated up here today, and I don't often get frustrated. I try my best to, especially when I'm on the dais, be as cool and as measured as I can. I think my frustration came from a place of some of the comments that were made by some of my colleagues. And it's in a way of almost making it seem like we're not willing to move with Cajun on this proposal. I asked Robert when we were talking a second ago, "Have you met any resistance since you come in this chamber?" It was something similar to that, was what I asked him. He said, "No." It's been a lot different over here than it's been at the city and even at Blueprint. We've been the commission, and this has been the chambers, that you've come to, to hear the proposal, to send it to staff to get the analysis, to actually have a conversation and dialogue about how we can deal with the problem. You even heard up here, all of us say that we want to allocate more dollars towards the problem. And so when I'm sitting here, I'm like, "Why does it seem like we're not trying to work this problem out? Why is the comment almost like we ain't done nothing? Like you're meeting the same resistance that you've met before? And why is it like, well, it was just, I almost felt like I was bad if I didn't just push this by today, because I wanted to come up with something that was more holistic? Like, I was just this horrible person, because I just wouldn't go with it? And it's not, and I can understand, I even said it before, I can understand the angst that you have because you've dealt with this for so long, you've been at it for three years. I mentioned it earlier. But we've been a commission that I've been on since I've been here, and the great, the blessing that we've had at the county since I've been at the county, every time a new commissioner comes in, he comes in with a mind that's leveled, and he always comes in, he or she always comes in with an approach that's really holistic, that doesn't just rush into things. We've been fortunate, in a way, in a way, over the years of the commissioners that we've gotten, in the group that we have, that we can work together and do these things and come up with these ideas, but do it in a way that does not compromise process integrity in the rest of the projects that we may have here at Leon County. We're very thoughtful about the way we do things, even Commissioner Proctor. Sometimes he can go off, but, you know, he's even thoughtful, too. But seriously, though, I really want, I just want us to all embrace the fact that we are working together. This is not a thing where we're trying to say, "We don't want to do it," it was, it's just, "Let's take our time with it. Let's take six more months, let's have more meetings, let's get to something new." And I think we're going to build something that's going to be a model for everywhere across the state. I really do. I don't think it's just going to be something that we're doing, that people aren't going to pay attention to. It could be an award-winning program that can come out of this, once we put our minds together, and we'll be thankful that we took the time that we needed to, to come up with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Okay, seeing nobody else in the queue, or were you in the queue, Commissioner Minor? Briefly, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Maddox, thanks very much for your comments. And yes, I think, I think what I was talking about before will coexist with your motion. But just to be more clear, though, what I'm proposing is that we add $500,000 from GR to, for use in ship-like functionality, right? So it's gap financing, it's extending the low-income land use restrictions, like what Mark was saying before, from 50 years to imper continuity, which creates more housing, you know, it almost doubles the housing by making that permanently for affordable housing, construction, rehabilitation, that kind of thing. We get much more flexibility. When you have more flexibility, you have developers more interested in those funds, because they're able to use those funds for their specific project funding gaps. We can't do that with the Cajun plan modeled after the Pinellas land acquisition. So I think this is like a much better alternative. What I'd like to do, Commissioner Maddox, I'd like to have an amendment, which I hope is friendly, to add to your motion as a starting point of $500,000 to be input into our budget process. So when the county commission talks and starts to meet about our budget for fiscal year '26, we have $500,000 as a budget request line item that we then discuss. Now, that doesn't mean we're committed right now, today, on $500,000, and I want to be very clear about that. What that means, though, is as we go through this budget process for fiscal year '26, we're going to have to figure out the trade-off. $500,000 that we're adding to affordable housing on top of ship, what do we, what else do we give away in our budget? What do we balance out so that our budget is balanced? That's a discussion we'll need to have. Maybe it'll be more than $500,000, maybe some of the federal funding will come through, maybe it won't, maybe it'll be less. But I think that is the best way for us to use these dollars. As some people have said here on the dais already, I'm also not in favor of taking dollars away from our 20% Blueprint allocation, which we use for road projects. I think that is very important. But I do think this way is better, because it's more flexibility, and we already have the ship type of work that we do with developers to make it more accessible to developers, and make it more likely that money will be used for affordable housing projects. So Commissioner Maddox, will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Commissioner Minor, can I just intervene here? You're going to lose me on that, okay? I can't vote for that.
Which part?
Adding any money to his, I'm not comfortable adding a line item arbitrarily. Why not make it a million? Why not make it 20 million? Like, we have a budget process, that process is designed to examine and analyze these exact things, and go, "Hey, here are some options for you." But by preliminarily just putting a number on it, that is, that's uncomfortable to me.
I think, if I might, Mr. Chair. What you're asking for is more specificity in the budget discussion item that I've asked for.
Yes.
And so I think the way we can get to where we're trying to go here is specifically within that budget, that budget discussion item, we look at the proposal that Commissioner Minor has come up with, but Commissioner Minor, can we, can we not, can you go with that without putting a specific dollar amount to the actual item? Or do you need it, does it have to have a dollar amount?
My, no, again, this doesn't commit us to the fiscal year '26 number. It's a starting point, which our county does already. You know, we take what the existing budget year is and project it to the next budget year, and that's our starting point for that line item.
Commissioner Minor, all due respect, I feel like you're setting an expectation then at $500,000. It needs to be, we will look at our budget, and we will see what we, what our revenues look like, what we have the ability to fund, what we would then have the ability to not fund. That's all a part of that process, and so just arbitrarily throwing a number at it gives me great discomfort.
Mr. Chair, I hear your point, I hear your point. But as I've said twice, and I think everyone here has been listening to me, it doesn't commit us, it's a starting point for us to have discussions. Now, listen, listen, I mean, if it's the will of the board, I'm happy, I'm happy to go with what Commissioner Maddox is proposing, right?
The concept of the idea.
The concept, yes. My preference would be to have something that we can start with as we have this discussion. Listen, Mr. Chairman, you can laugh if you want, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find something that is giving us...
I mean, listen, Mr., please. Commissioner Minor, I've made it clear, my position on that, I don't think that's necessary. I think that we're muddling it, right? We're trying to get something across the line here that pushes this into a posture where we can actually be cohesive and take in as many opportunities as possible. But we are, if we are hamstringing by arbitrarily applying a budget number, when we don't know revenues, we don't know budgets, we don't know anything, we don't know where it's coming from.
I think, I think all of that is understood.
Well, then, why do we need that $500,000?
On point, I think, I think what he's done is, he said, Commissioner Minor, if I'm not mistaken, you said that you would take the number out if I'd be willing to add the concept of it, and then we would talk about the number, maybe even when we get a better idea of what our estimated or potential mileage will be, or income will be, revenues will be in the new fiscal year.
In the interest of moving this forward, I'll basically, I'll agree with what Commissioner Maddox is suggesting.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're in a posture now. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I've got Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Caban, and then back to Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings, you good? Do you want to get in on it, or no? Okay.
On point. What's the, is the motion, has the motion changed?
No, sir.
No, it's the same motion.
Well, there is a change. It's the same motion, but the concept of what Commissioner Minor brought up will be added to the motion as a friendly amendment, but there is no number, there's no budget number to it.
The county administrator's got a point, I think. For there to be a budget discussion item.
Yes, budget discussion item. That includes the concept of what Commissioner Minor has asked for.
Which would be a budget discussion.
Okay, so Commissioner Minor has added a budget discussion item to the original motion. Commissioner O'Keefe, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I do want to echo Commissioner Maddox's comments. We are that commission. We, we respect each other, and I disagree strongly with some of the other decisions on this, but I know that every one of my colleagues is coming at it with the decision they believe is best for the outcome. So that is absolutely what this commission is. That being said, on this particular issue, I'm disappointed because we've talked a little bit about, and one concern has been, well, we wanted to know, will this even work for Leon County? We haven't let staff analysis how this could work for Leon County. We actually have been, it is, we have been let down, in my opinion, on that, because we did ask staff to analyze this proposal for Leon County in our item, and what we have gotten in this report item is not an analysis of what might could work for Leon County. It's a simple, "Hey, this doesn't work, here is what we do, here's what we like to continue doing, and this doesn't work." I thought, I would have thought that it would be in better faith to say, and we would know at this point, if we had some information that was true analysis, "This doesn't work, but if it were like this, it would work." And we don't have that, and you're right, we can't make a decision on that right now because we don't have that. And then, as far as concerns about moving 20% from the road repaving and maintenance portion, you know, I just want to separate that, that is road repaving. It's important, it's very important. But our sidewalk program, very important, targeting the most adverse sidewalks, separate, funded separately, and that is something that we need to consider. We're not, and no one is suggesting that we don't need to repave roads. What we're suggesting is a portion to put a program that could double the number of new units for low and very low-income families. It's a small shift, don't worry, I'm not going back with it, this is, you know, I'm staying on this motion. And it would have been nice to know if we could customize the Pinellas program that we asked for an analysis of to our county. We can't, we can't move forward with that. And I am relieved that we, we are all interested in this budget discussion of coming up with more money for affordable housing and come up with a proposal that works. And I'm glad we have a budget item this year. And I'm not going to mess with the motion with the budget item. I think it's pretty easy for us to say, "We ought to have a budget item every year for how much money and new programs we could add for affordable housing." And so I am as frustrated as I'm sure the Cajun folks are, and I'm glad we had an up or down vote, because you deserve that, you deserve that. But as you can see, even in talking about creative solutions to the past, we find out, "Well, it's in this bucket, but now it's in this bucket, but maybe we can reallocate with this bucket." And what your proposal had was, we knew where it was going, and we could see what was coming out of it. I'm looking forward to more money and more solutions in our budget meeting. I do, I will support this, because we'll take every discussion we can get and every money we can get, but I do feel like we're kicking the can down the road, but it is a repaved road.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Caban, you are in the queue.
So I just would like to have a clear state of the motion before I comment, if I need to comment.
Motion on the floor is, motion on the floor is for us to, for the Cajun proposal to be evaluated by... Motion on the floor is for us to, for the Cajun proposal to be evaluated by HFA and staff. The Cajun will work with the HFA as well as other stakeholders to bring back other applicable proposals for our consideration that would deal with affordable housing, that we have a budget discussion item come back to us that's specific to ship funding as well as other revenues that we can use or monies that we can use towards affordable housing. As a part of that budget discussion item, that we would discuss the concept of what Commissioner Minor has proposed, that we look at as a concept, and look at potentially allocating dollars towards that concept to be able, to be used towards affordable housing as well. There's motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
So I will uphold my second, and I will support the motion. I want to just be clear, so that way in the future, I want the board to know just where I'm at, right? You know, Commissioner O'Keefe, I want to support this, right? And I mean that dearly. I'm not going to support any discussion or any line item budgets in regards to this in the future if it removes funding from infrastructure. In my district, infrastructure is one of our top issues. We get emails daily from folks who can't have the mailman get down the road. It's an issue we're dealing with right now, and I've been very clear on this and very consistent over this, over the last three years with this board, as far as like, that's a top priority for our office. Now, right now, we're fighting to get a traffic light in front of Woodville Elementary School, right? Because there's not a... It's an unsafe intersection across from a K-8 school. And so the issues in our district are really just infrastructure targeted. And I just want to be clear, so you guys know where I'm at in the future, and hopefully that can help guide, you know, staff as they look for funding opportunities in the future, that what's important at least to us. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chair Caban. Commissioner Proctor, you are our last man in the queue. You want to close this out before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, Robert Kennedy, the late Attorney General, U.S. Senator, said something, and I may be off a couple of words, so some men see things as they are and ask why. I see things that never was and ask why not. And I thought tonight, Commissioner Maddox, that the motion by Commissioner O'Keefe, certainly he sees things as they are, he sees things through the HFA eyes, but launching a space program, it's seeing things, and you say, why not? And tonight, we had an opportunity, I felt, to, and this was not to excoriate anyone here, commissioners, or make anybody feel bad, but we can chew bubble gum and walk. We have an opportunity tonight, to me, to make a down payment. You all have heard of a layaway plan, the layaway? You ain't buying it all today, but you putting 5%, 10%, you putting good faith on it. And what this proposal was, was a good faith and a layaway commitment to perfect and bring the rest of the idea and the other elemental parts to be shaped down the road somewhere. Walmart has gotten rid of its DEI, but it still has this layaway, and they're probably going to keep that layaway, and people are buying now and laying away all the way till December. And I know with the staff that we have, I have great confidence because I know Vince Long can perform. He can deliver. If he was some stuttered-up, couldn't-get-it-done, weak like that, we wouldn't put pressure on him. We'd just, you know, just give him a break. But that's not who he is and his staff, and they will perform when given directions and given directions and shown what we want. They can execute. We got a team that can deliver. So tonight, we had an opportunity to at least purchase, to accept, receive this idea as layaway. We didn't have to have all the money tonight, all the ideas, but these folk would have gone home with hope and gone home with a little bit more belief in their own abilities to meet with, to move the needle with their government. And Commissioner Caban, I understand, you understand, I wish you understood. Vince Long is aware how many times I have left this meeting. I thought I saw Cliff Thiel in here tonight. He was here, okay. Because I used to complain, I've complained, that coming to the county commission was a waste of time for me because there was never nothing on the agenda about the South Side, about District One, about nothing pertinent to the lives of people in my district. Just waste my time. I stayed angry all the time, and I don't know what it was about staff, but they only saw the Great North East and North Side of Tallahassee. Well, that's changed, son. And if I told you that I'm sensitive tonight because a whole bunch of folk here would, probably in my district, who are under housed, are not housed, but I dare not say this is about District One and I'm excited because we're talking about my district tonight. But if I said this is my district, hell, all y'all would shut down and walked out the door and say, Proctor, turn this mic off. That's always been. So I'd never say anything about District One no more, but I know damn well that this right here is District One, whether you know or not. I know when it's my district. So I wanted to layaway something tonight for people who, not only 32304, 305, 310, that element, that's what this is talking about. I'm sorry that staff didn't say District One. You probably would have just got rid of it a long time ago, but I recognize my people when you use the right terms. So, Commissioner Maddox, I think that we could do two things. It's kind of bad that you desire for these people to go back and talk to HFA. HFA is not elected by these people. We are. HFA has a perspective and an analysis, but they ain't our daddy. They're not. We don't have to rely on them, and I think that it's achievable that we can start tonight and not kick this can down the road and do what we've been doing to this faith community for a period of time, and that's telling them to come back, more analysis, anything that takes water, and throw it on top of a candle, and that's what I feel that we've done tonight. And going back to the same guy who stood there, I just don't know why we're doing these people like that. But if that's the desire of this body and that we can't make a layaway payment and give them a win, then I'm stuck in a democratic process. Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioner Proctor, I think the thing's messing up again, says I got four of y'all in the queue. Is that not correct? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Maddox's motion, second by Commissioner Caban. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Passes 6-1. Commissioner Proctor in opposition. All right, commissioners, thank you for the robust debate on that. And Commissioner O'Keefe, I know that's close to your heart issue, and I'm hopeful that we can come back through the budget process and make something happen there, but I just want to commend you on your advocacy. I know that's important to you. Okay, commissioners, the next phase of our meeting tonight, we have citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Our speaker cards are now over 30. We are well over 30 speaker cards. So I would ask our speakers in the audience, I'll let everybody settle down. Excuse me, could you leave the chambers if you want to chat, please? We got to carry on. Thank you. All right, so we've got over 30 speaker cards for citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. I would ask our speakers to please respect our three-minute-per-speaker rule. If you can cut it shorter than that, that would be great, but please cut it off at three minutes. That's an hour and a half of citizens to be heard on non-agenda items, and it is 8:20 at night. So, Mr. County Administrator, please announce our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, the first speaker is Eric Draper. I was looking for Eric. I thought we might have lost him.
Saw him earlier.
Yeah. I'll be the next speaker. Tito W. L. Leader, excuse me if I've got that wrong. Tito?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good day. I'm Tito Leaden. I live in Tallahassee, and I'm here representing, and a lot of us are representing, Tallahassee Community Action Committee. And, well, if you could do like a show of hands, like everyone who came for TICAC. Cool, yeah, that's a lot of people. Okay, so we came because yesterday the ICE raids started, and they attacked a lot of Tallahassee community members. So we wanted to have you put a resolution for Tallahassee to be a sanctuary city for undocumented immigrants, you know, because these people are very important to our community. They have jobs, they have lives, they have kids, they have families, and they don't deserve to live in fear, and they don't deserve to enough to worry every day. And a lot of them went to their jobs yesterday, and they had to leave, they had to lose money, you know? So that's not right, and that's what we're here to speak about. So we demand Tallahassee and, you know, Leon County be a sanctuary city, and for the police to deprioritize arresting undocumented immigrants. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Emily Lewis, to be followed by Summer Hartman, or Summer?
Emily Lewis?
Hi, this is Emily.
Okay, if you could please hold your applause till the, maybe the end of the speakers, that would be great. Ms. Lewis, go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Emily Lewis, I live in Tallahassee. Good afternoon, Leon County Commissioners and community members. Earlier this morning, my mother sent me my certificate of citizenship during my neuroscience class. I called her after receiving it, asking her why she sent it over to me. I'm a legal immigrant. She told me she was at work, but forwarded me an email detailing ICE raids happening in Tallahassee. Better safe than sorry, right? My name is Emily Lewis. I am 20 years old, and I have been a citizen of the United States of America for 19 years, adopted into this country by my parents. I'm an American citizen. I have my papers at home. I'm lucky. The people in Jefferson County are not as fortunate as I. On Tuesday, January 28th, in Jefferson County, there was an Immigration and Customs Enforcement raid conducted by the Florida Highway Patrol and the Homeland Security Investigations Division of the United States Department of Homeland Security. 12 people were detained. 12 hard-working people who came in, searched for the American dream, the picket fences around our houses, the Buick we drive, the Hermes many Kelly we carry, the golden retrievers at our house. 12 people who work and aspire for what we have were detained. 12 people with families who wish upon shooting stars for a better life, a better life for their children, their husbands, their wives, their mothers, who they love with their whole being. 12 people who dared to dream were detained for trying to survive. So as an immigrant, as an American citizen, I beg of you, lead with empathy, have mercy on undocumented immigrants. Make Tallahassee a sanctuary city for undocumented immigrants. Deprioritize arrests for undocumented immigrants and offer them protections. Don't punish people for daring to dream. Hold kindness in your hearts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you. Next speaker.
Summer Hartman, to be followed by Haley Perdue.
Ms. Hartman, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Summer Hartman. I'm from Tallahassee, Florida. Anywhere like my actual address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's, uh, okay. By making Tallahassee a sanctuary city, we are helping our friends and our neighbors feel safe in their own homes. As a community, it is our responsibility to look out for each other, and our moral obligation to do everything in our power to keep our community safe. No one should have to live in fear of persecution or fear that their family will be separated from them. Undocumented immigrants are not dangerous criminals that we need to pursue. Most people come to the United States for a better life and more prosperous opportunities. They are hard workers who not only contribute to the economy, but to our community and our lives. By making Leon County a sanctuary city, we are helping to ensure the safety of our community. We are ensuring that our students are not afraid to go to class. We are helping to ensure that people aren't afraid to go to work. We are making sure that when in need of medical attention, our immigrant friends and neighbors are not afraid to go to the hospital and seek out the care they need. I can't speak for everyone, but me personally, I care deeply for the safety of my community. What I don't care for is instilling fear in innocent people. I don't care for the persecution of my friends and neighbors. In fact, I detest it, and anyone who truly cares for their city and local community would detest it as well. For the safety of Leon County, we ask that you consider our request to make this city a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Please hold your applause until everybody's done. Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, you have a question?
I've heard city a few times, and I do appreciate these well-meaning folks and their passion behind their calls, but I wanted to address the county attorney, if you might.
Please.
Can Leon County Commission create a sanctuary city?
We do not control law enforcement. We do not exercise any jurisdiction over FHP, FDLE, TPD, LCSO, ICE, or any other law enforcement entity, nor do we exercise jurisdiction over the state attorney's office. So there is really little meaningful action that the board can take to limit ICE's activities in Leon County.
Whoa, 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 ma'am, ma'am.
Please, you cannot speak, ma'am. We can't tell the sheriff that, anything.
No, we can't. Mr. Chair, if I can, I appreciate, again, I appreciate the passion that you guys are speaking with, but I want you to understand the limitations by which this government operates under and what we have the jurisdiction to do and not do. And your frustrations that you may have may be well-placed. We're willing to listen, but those frustrations can't be with us because we have no jurisdiction over anything. We don't even have jurisdiction over the sheriff's office. The sheriff is a separate elected official who makes his own decisions about what he does and how he operates the sheriff's department. So we're not like the city where the city police is a sub, is a division of the city. No, it's not even that. We're Leon County government. The sheriff is the sheriff, the tax collector, the constitutional officers, all of them. They operate their own offices. So we can't do anything to make them do anything. We can ask them, but we can't do anything to make them do anything. And for that reason, too, we can't make the city do anything. Nothing. We can't force them to do anything, especially when it comes to enforcement, law enforcement in particular. I just wanted to put that out there, but I do appreciate the passion. I will sit here and listen to every speaker who wants to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, next speaker.
Haley Perdue, followed by Justin Jordan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Haley Perdue, 1227 North Martin Luther King Jr., Boulevard. Commissioners, and having heard Commissioner Maddox's words and understand them, I speak to you today as influential people in our community and as representatives of our community. Florida Highway Patrol assisted Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, yesterday in a raid in Jefferson County. Last week, the Florida Department of Education indicated they would cooperate with ICE in executing orders to detain and deport alleged undocumented individuals. Are we going to allow ICE in our schools? Should, don't our children deserve to learn without fear? ICE is doing what it was built to do, criminalize and terrify immigrants like my ancestors and many of yours, who are trying to build a better life for their children. This is being done to deflect blame of what is going wrong in this country onto people who are already less fortunate, people who are here fleeing unlivable situations in their countries of origin. countries of origin. The administration inflames blame and outrage at immigrants to distract from the harm coming from the top down. It is our duty as citizens of a democracy to speak up when we don't see our values being upheld by our government. That is what it means to be a citizen. I urge you to carefully consider your own values and what kind of person you want to be and exemplify. While many of our state politicians battle to see who can bow lower at Trump's feet, real harm is being inflicted on real people, many of whose worst sin is wanting a better life for their families. I'm not comfortable with that. Are you? This is an attack on our community and on our neighbors. These are acts of terror meant to divide us and make people turn on each other or turn a blind eye rather than speak up for those less fortunate than them. Leviticus 1933 through 34, "And if a stranger dwells with you in your land, you shall not mistreat him. The stranger who dwells among you shall be to you as one born among you, and you shall love him as yourself, for you were strangers in the land of Egypt. I am the Lord your God." Many of us have forgotten or perhaps never knew what it is to be strangers in a strange land, wanting nothing other than safety for your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Justin Jordan to be followed by Regina Joseph.
Mr. Jordan, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Justin Jordan, address exempt. Tonight, I heard a lot about what you can't do, but what I'd like to hear is what you can do for the citizens who elected you, for the people in the communities who are suffering as this federal government continues its crackdown on immigrants, communities, and families. This government was designed for the people, by the people. What I've seen tonight and what I've continued to hear is that this government is actually owned by the corporations for the corporations. I heard that you can't do anything about illegal immigration or helping people who are actively suffering as the government is increasing its attacks on immigrant communities. I've heard that we can't do anything about affordable housing because that would hurt the corporations, that would hurt the landlords. Tonight, the people of Tallahassee are suffering. Tonight, the immigrant communities of Tallahassee are suffering. And as Commissioner Proctor said, the people of his district, many of whom look like me, are continually suffering as the little government that could repeatedly and continually refuses to do something. So tonight, I ask you, I call upon you to do something, even if it's not meaningful in your eyes. Come out in support of the immigrant community that has built America from the ground up. Immigrants have a history in this country, of building this country, but now they're repeatedly under attack, they're repeatedly deemed as criminals or wrong. And as someone who's black, I know how that feels. I know how it feels to have the world judge you. I know how it feels to have the world look down upon you. I know how it feels to have your, have someone roll their eyes at you as you speak. Commission, please listen to your communities, not your special interests. Listen to the people of Tallahassee who have come out tonight, not only in support of immigrants, but also in support of a better future for all in Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Joseph, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Regina Joseph to be followed by Christopher Sharp.
Ms. Joseph, name and address for the record, please.
Regina Joseph, I'm not giving my address. I'm here today because there are actually many sanctuary counties around the United States, and I believe that Leon County can also do the same. You can work with the Leon County Sheriff's Office and demand that deprioritize arrest of undocumented people. You can ensure that you educate immigrants who are in this community, help them know their rights. I believe there are a lot more, a lot more things you can do, but right now, you're not actually thinking creatively and using your mind to come up with something that can actually address the problems in this community. Right now, we are scared, our families are scared, our neighbors are scared, and it is your job, that's what you are paid to do, is to give solutions to the problems that we are giving y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Next speaker.
Christopher Sharp to be followed by Haley McGuire.
Mr. Sharp, name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Sharp, Tallahassee. And I understand that there are limits to your jurisdiction, but I am here to say that I think that this, that the current situation is immensely embarrassing for elected officials here in Leon County and for Florida as a whole. Having the Highway Patrol be arresting people living in Florida, in Jefferson County, I think is not a good look. And these people are integrated into our community. They, they work, they support families, and I understand that there is a limit to what you can do. But it is, but we have also had limits in, in what we are doing, and we have managed to make it work. So, I understand many of these people can't vote for you, as well as, and many of the people who do vote for you may want something else, but we also vote for you. And these are our neighbors, and we do hope that you can, that you can, that you can create a sanctuary for them, to create a space for them, because they are here, they have been here, and that, and that just needs to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Haley McGuire to be followed by Kayden Rosa.
Ms. McGuire, name and address for the record, please.
Haley McGuire, Tallahassee, Florida. I am also going to be speaking to you as an individual, not just as our elected officials. What are you doing as individuals? Because you're saying all that you can't do as elected officials, I question that, but what are you doing as individuals? To protect your neighbors, to care about your neighbors, to show the people in our community who are scared that you care about them. Commissioner O'Keefe, you said tonight during, I believe, Agenda Item 26 on liens and fines, that we shouldn't be going after people's primary residence. Leon County are these people's primary residence. This is their home. Why do you only care about certain citizens and their rights to a home in Leon County? I really hope you sit with what everything is being said tonight. I do think it's really telling which commissioners are here and which ones are paying attention. I really hope that you search within yourselves and as a committee on what your power actually is in this community, because as other speakers have already said, you are leaders. You are leaders. It does not matter if you don't have power over exactly what we showed up thinking you did, but you have power, and to deny that is really embarrassing. I really hope you sit with us. I hope we're getting through to you. I know you've had a long day, but this is important and we're here for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kayden Rosa to be followed by Colton Bostwick.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kayden Rosa and I live in Tallahassee. We came here to ask you to deprioritize focusing on the immigration police and to make Leon County a sanctuary county. It is your job as much as anyone else's to keep everyone in this community safe. You know there were 12 people who were detained, and these people weren't being detained because of some criminal action they took, it was because of their identity, and there's straight out no way to justify detaining people because of their identity. And I have to criticize all of you as well, because I've watched many of you walk out of the room and go take your own personal time. It's not, you decided the time acceptable to do that was during public comment, when the people who you're actually supposed to be representing are speaking up. You have the responsibility as an elected official to use your platform to advocate for the right actions, even if you claim you cannot take them yourself. You should be on your social media saying that these things need to happen, instead of acting like you can't do anything. I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Colton Bostwick to be followed by Joseph Viscera.
Mr. Bostwick, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my legal name is Colton Bostwick and I am a resident of the city of Tallahassee. And as with everyone else, I do understand there is a limit of the jurisdictional power of the Lee County.
Sir, can you move closer to the mic? I want to be able to hear clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand there is a jurisdictional limit to the power of the Leon County Commission. However, I'm also distinctly aware of the reality for many migrants in the state of Florida, regardless of legal status. I've lived only an hour away from Imoculie. I'm aware that many undocumented migrants are denied the rights of an American to a safe, well-regulated, and well-paid labor environment, and many are subjected to horrendous conditions on agricultural farms and plantations in southern Florida. And then it's up to the people in the medical field to try to do what they can, even though there's little they can do, given that the people there have to live in fear of deportation for seeking help, and there's only so much they can do due to their undocumented status. I'm aware that is a problem in South Florida and not North Florida, but this is an issue for the entire state. This is an issue of an entire state being asked by our state government, federal government, and generally people above all of our heads to accept brutality and barbarity towards the people who are already being left to face the brunt of American hospitality and exploitation. And so while there may be limits to what you can do, I can at the very least ask that should members of the state or federal government seek your cooperation in enforcing their policies of mass deportation against undocumented immigrants, that you tell them there is nothing you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joseph Viscera to be followed by Chloe Ilkis.
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Viscera.
Hi, my name is Joseph Viscera. I live in Tallahassee, and I'm a student over at Florida State. Go Knowles. I am here today to ask for the deprioritization of arresting undocumented immigrants and the further general allocation of Leon County and Tallahassee as a sanctuary city, or at least for it to be pushed to the greatest of your abilities. I've had the honor throughout my life to have met many people from many walks of life, many countries, people who were born here and people who have decided to make this country their home later in their life, whether it be in fear for their happiness and health in the countries that they come from, or in the hope of the promise they believe this country can bring. What I can say about every person I've met is that they were good people, who wanted nothing but the best for their family, their communities, and the place they call home. It's very easy to hear anecdotes of fear and danger, but when you take the time to listen, you quickly learn how these are on the fringes of fringe cases. From there, it's easy to say that there are processes they can take, things they can do to become a citizen, but that can take years or more if it passes at all. And due to obstacles such as red tape and during that time, people in the worst positions with the greatest fears for their futures, they don't have other things they can do. They don't have the options, the option to do things the right way, while they are simultaneously fearing for their future safety and trying to build that future. It's easy to say that these human beings, people just trying to survive, that they're dangerous. They're not. It's easy to say that there are paths they can take legally. There rarely is. It's easy to say that this is inevitable, that there is nothing you can do, and though I have heard that you are limited in your abilities, you are still in a position of leadership, a position of power, and I would like for you to search and see within your abilities what you can do, because I know there are things you can do. If you are concerned about the people, the ones struggling the most with the most fear and sadness and being closest to losing it all, then you must begin with the community's threat, and not only by existing policies, but by an increasing and inexcusable hostility from government on all levels. That can begin with Tallahassee as a sanctuary city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chloe Ilkis to be followed by Sebastian Garis, and I apologize if I butchered your last name there. Chloe Ilkis first.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Chloe Ilkis. I'm in 32304. So, I'll keep it pretty brief, because I know everyone probably wants to get back home to their families, but that's the crux of the issue today is residents of Leon County want to just safely get back home to their families, go to sleep in their bed, wake up the next morning, go to work, come home, and so on, just like we all do. But that is more and more difficult with the recent immigration crackdowns. I know that there's only so much y'all can write into law to, to address this, but I know you have some sphere of influence in Leon County as the Leon County Commissioners. I know that there's something that you can do, either using your influence, making Leon County a sanctuary county, like we've seen all throughout the US, some way to use your position of power that we, as citizens of the United States, but also Leon County, have afforded to you by voting for you. So I'm just here today to ask you to do what you can, use your position of power to help our undocumented neighbors and undocumented residents of Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sebastian, Sebastian G. to be followed by Priscilla Lopez Cullen. Sebastian, there we go.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Garces. I live in Tallahassee, and I would like to keep my statement pretty short, but hopefully that doesn't keep it from being as poignant. My name is Sebastian. I'm a Colombian immigrant that arrived legally. This does not keep me from feeling sympathy for those who are forced to come through other means. I believe that deep down, we all know that these people come out of pure necessity, that they have families to keep safe, just as we do. Subjecting these people to a reign of terror and fear that follows them throughout their life is not something a moral and strong society does. There are plenty of logistical, economic, and utilitarian reasons to oppose these raids, but at the end of the day, it's humanity and love that matter, and when viewed through that lens, the answer is even simpler. Leon County should become a sanctuary county and protect its people and deprioritize the raids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Priscilla Lopez Cullen to be followed by Oliver Cheese.
Hello, my name is Priscilla. I live in Tallahassee. I'm a daughter of an immigrant mother and a first-generation college student. I stand in firm opposition to the US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, an agency notorious for targeting and violently detaining undocumented individuals. Their abuse of power is so extreme that even US citizens, including veterans, have been wrongfully caught in their raids. This is not just an issue of policy, it is a systematic failure rooted in racism and cruelty. Immigrants are the backbone of this nation. The United States was built on the hard work of those who came here seeking a better life, and today, immigrants continue to drive our economy and enrich our communities. They fill essential jobs, pay taxes, launch businesses that fuel innovation and prosperity. Many studies show that immigrants do not steal jobs from native-born workers, but instead create new opportunities, boosting productivity and economic growth. Yet, instead of recognizing their contributions, our system criminalizes them. It subjects them to exploitation, denies them basic protections, and forces them to live in fear of deportation. We must fight for policies that provide pathways to legal status, protect undocumented workers from abuse, and expand sanctuary cities where immigrants can live without the constant threat of ICE raids. And acknowledging the limitations of your abilities for legislation, there are some things that you can do, such as banning county agencies from collecting or sharing immigration status information with federal immigration authorities, or restricting ICE access to county facilities and records, and preventing them from using county jails, offices, or databases to detain or track undocumented residents. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, you're recognized.
Thank you. To dig a little bit deeper, I do, I do understand, the sanctuary city, sanctuary county, there are some sanctuary counties, I actually looked it up. In the state of Florida, it's illegal per 2019 Senate Bill 168. Took effect July 1st, 2019, signed by the governor. States that it is prohibited from, for any, let's see. It ensures that the state and local entities and law enforcement agencies cooperate with federal government officials to enforce and not obstruct immigration law. I just, again, I just want us to all be on the same page on what we can and cannot do here. So, even if we could do sanctuary counties, in the state of Florida, there is no sanctuary counties, no sanctuary counties. counties, no sanctuary cities, because by state law, we can't have, there is no such thing, we can't have sanctuary counties nor cities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Oliver Chees to be followed by Alfredo.
Hello, my name is Oliver Chees, and I live in Tallahassee. Actually, I absolutely do understand that there are limits on the power of this board and what it can do, and that the state of Florida is putting more and more limits on that. However, I do think that at the root of this issue should be a desire on both sides to work together to protect the immigrants that make up our thriving, vibrant communities. And that we have to be willing, obviously, to look beyond the letter of the law and to be able to devise innovative solutions which don't just concede entirely to, you know, these blatantly repressive acts of legislation, which may have been authorized by the Florida government, but certainly unauthorized or supported by the people of Florida. And so obviously, there are actions which this commission can undertake. You know, you can still issue, for example, recommendations. You can work with, and you do work with, the county sheriff, often and frequently and on a deep level. And you should, and, I'm sorry. And you should do so for the benefit of the people who live here, including the undocumented people and the immigrants who live and work alongside us. I think when you turn around and say that you can't take action because there's a bill which, because there is a bill which says this or that, or because it's not explicitly written within the list of things which you can and cannot do, I think frankly, it's out of a desire more to avoid representing the will of the people, rather than desire to confirm, to conform to the letter of the law. I think it's cowardice, it's abandoning your duties, elected officials, and it's turning away from the people who represent, who you represent, who elect you, and who ultimately are the source of all power in a democratic government. Thank you, you owe my time, Mr. Chair.
Alfredo to be followed by Katie Kuzwi, and sorry about that again, if I butchered your last name there. Alfredo to be followed by Katie K. Anyone?
My name is Gati Kurzweil. I live in zip code 32304. The Public Safety Coordinating Council was established by Leon County Board of County Commissioners in 2001. The council has met regularly since that time to monitor the jails' population, as well as increased efforts of coordination between the many agencies of the criminal justice system. This is straight from the Leon County government website. As a state legislator debates a law about dealing with using local jails as overflow for DHS, how can you seriously look us in the face and say you can't do anything? I yield my time.
Caitlin Burns to be followed by Thomas Spears.
It's Carolyn, but I have terrible handwriting. I'm a resident of the city of Tallahassee and Leon County, District 3. I grew up hearing the stories of the difficulties of immigration and discrimination, but I'm lucky in that my family came before the racist immigration acts in the 1920s were passed. So by accident of birth, I have not had to deal with what these folks have to deal with to find a better life. I understand that there are limits to jurisdiction, but if we can print out flyers saying, "Know your rights," if, I understand state laws are different, but my mother's school in Massachusetts has issued guidance to teachers as telling how they can protect their students while complying with law enforcement. We are individual citizens doing our very best to get the word out about what is happening and how to protect oneself. And again, know your legal rights and the difference between an arrest warrant and an administrative warrant to folks while y'all have the bully pulpit and can spread this message far and wide. There are things you can do. And I know that when we get through this, when future generations ask me, "What did you do about it?", I want to give them an answer I can be proud of. I really hope that you all feel the same way. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thomas Spears to be followed by our final speaker, Camila Munante.
My name is Thomas Spears. I live in 32303, and I'm here with TCAC, along with everybody else, to ask the board to make Leon County a sanctuary city and to not cooperate with ICE when they want to kidnap working people that they say are here illegally. This, of course, is in response to the variety of reports of raids, whether it's by ICE or DHS or any other department, that were supposed to have happened yesterday, in response to the general mindset that is coming from the White House. As always with these sort of events, and many times on purpose, the specifics are always very hard to pin down. And that's very much on purpose, that's the point. These calls coming from the highest office in the land, they aren't policies of protecting people, they're policies of terror. These are reports of raids and arrests yesterday, and the degree of panic cannot, we always try to limit it, we don't try to spread things that we can't confirm, but it's always, some is always going to get out, because we're trying to get the right information, we're trying to get the kind of information that she was talking about, knowing your rights and such, but then, is it this department, is it that department, are they here or there? That's always part of the point. It's policies of terror. It's to make people who are undocumented people, whether they are or not, which that's always on their, on the words of these departments, live in fear every day. That's no way to live anywhere, not in Leon County, not in Florida, not, it shouldn't be in the U.S., regardless of what the White House may say. It's not a policy of protecting Americans, which is what the White House has tried to say, that's just trying to create a scapegoat to blame the ills of this country on. The ills of this country are not the fault of illegal immigrants. The ills of this country, to find out who is at fault, we must all keep in mind that those ills create a lot of profit for a very small number of people. And when they're trying to get people, to us to point the finger at each other, because we're not pointing the finger at them. This conversation goes, of course, outside the purview of this board, but there is some ability, of course, there's been discussion about what is legal and such. It is the fact that you have to do something. When people are in panic, when people are scared, who do we turn to? We turn to each other, of course. We are not on that dais, we're not on the city dais, we're not at state legislature. Y'all are. Work within the limits of the law, do what you gotta do, but we need something. We want a sanctuary county, even aside the law. It's what, laws are supposed to follow the morals. The morals are to make this a sanctuary county, should be a sanctuary country. That's what we want. We want to work with you. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Our final speaker, Camila Munante.
It's Munante, but thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Camila Munante, and I am a first-generation college student at Florida State University. I'm here today as both a proud member of our community and also as the child of immigrants who worked very hard to get me where I am. I don't think I need to explain the fear that citizens and non-citizens alike have felt in the last week. I want to emphasize what many others have already stated, what you guys can do. Of course, there is a limit at the local county level. However, we are lucky enough to be in Leon County. Let's think bigger. While SB 168 mandates cooperation with ICE, local governments can still set policies that limit their role in immigration enforcement. For instance, the county can choose not to actively assist in enforcing ICE detainers unless there is a criminal warrant or judicial order. While ICE might still place detainers, local law enforcement could choose not to honor them without a court order. While the law allows ICE agents to access local jails, local governments can set conditions for ICE access, like requiring judicial oversight. This would minimize the ability of ICE to operate freely within local jails. Not to mention commissioners like yourself can't engage in educational efforts to inform the public, including your immigrant communities, about the rights under the law, the local government's stance on immigration, and how to interact with law enforcement in a way that minimizes harm. As our representatives, use your influence. As a first-generation student, I know the sacrifices immigrant families make to create better opportunities for their children. The fear and instability caused by these ICE raids undermine not only their efforts, but also the values of fairness and inclusion that should define Leon County. I would not have the privilege of speaking in front of you all today if it wasn't for undocumented immigrants. Deprioritize arrests for undocumented immigrants and offer them protections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chair, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody that showed up to speak, and thank you for keeping your comments brief, we appreciate that. Commissioners, we're done with our agenda, except for Commissioner time, so are there any items from the county attorney?
Nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator.
Just available for questions on any of the late-breaking issues, and a big congratulations to Commissioner Gaban and Alex. I just found out you missed the dinner break, you miss a lot, so you'll get plenty of unwanted advice and guidance from us, but.
We're gonna shower you.
Yeah, congrats.
Shower you greatly, that's exciting. All right, Commissioner time. Commissioner Proctor, we're gonna start with you at the end of the dais, and we'll just work our way back this way, if that's cool with everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Say that we've had a very spirited and uplifting meeting tonight. We're the greatest commission in Florida. I dare say that we're the greatest commission of the United States. We had a great retreat yesterday, and shouts out to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Shouts out to staff for the presentation for all of the outstanding work that was cataloged and presented to us in the format which we witnessed a lot of work. Indeed, I think I lifted up the idea about the National Forest, which is compatible, if secured, to issues of affordable housing, dirt that would not have a cost. The notion of the group Cajun, that we had the dirt of the National Forest, which citizens of the United States ought to have first right of refusal, and in particular, when the federal government has zero plan for the next 2,000 years to do anything with that property but let it sit there for various species. Commissioners, I've shared tonight a call for workshop on the federal freezing, I think Rachel Distrutte. We've had ICE raids across our nation, after school programs Title I support, Section 8 housing assistance on freeze, student grant, ship funds. All of this is frozen. So I've asked you, Mr. Chairman, supportive of our board, to afford us an advantage through our federal lobbyists, to understand what in the world is going on. And then, of course, we've had the projected, some committee to study FEMA and its future. And speaking of recovery, I guess we can add what we need to do, purchase salt trucks and snow recovery stuff, that's not even in the nobody's playbook. So FEMA, if it's scheduled to go out of existence, who fills those shoes and what occurs? But I think that there's been a litany of public policy shifts with immediate impact, which if we're to be and stay ahead of the issues, which we've heard numerous citizens come in tonight, just to talk about the caring for, I guess, the spirit of the base of the Statue of Liberty, bringing the year retired and huddled masses that yearn to be free, yearn to be free. How many people are yearning to be free? Free from homelessness, free from poverty, just yearning to be free. And so I've shared that, Mr. Chairman, this is your discretion, you're our chair.
Mr. Proctor, just real quick, I think the county administrator has some comments on that, and then I can tell you my thoughts.
Well, we can provide you a little bit of an update with what we know now. I have to admit to you that my speaking points on this earlier this afternoon have changed dramatically, and I'll defer to Chastity here in just a moment about a judicial intervention that has occurred since we started meeting tonight. But again, Commissioner Proctor, the White House Office of Management and Budget, as you know, issued a memorandum to all federal agencies to pause the obligation and dispersment of federal funds, again, just yesterday, and so this is all very new, we're just kind of learning about it as we go. Now, the pause, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Proctor, was to be effective at 5:00 p.m. today. The pause was intended to be in effect until the new administration can review and determine if funding for specific agency programs aligns with the president's priorities. This is what we know. Again, this impacts the issuance of new awards and dispersment of federal funds under open awards, and I think, again, the county attorney may have some additional clarification on that. We're still trying to determine, again, and probably some of the most urgent issues for our purposes and for our community partners, to determine if this impacted programs like WIC, programs like SNAP. But again, I think what you'll get from the county attorney's office at least will provide some peace of mind, at least for the immediate term. And with that, Chastity, I'll pass it off to you.
Yeah, not much is known, but what we do know is that a court has stayed, application of that particular OMB memo, for the time being, not for very long, just till, basically, arguments can be heard on the request for the injunction that's been filed. Litigation has already started on that issue, as well as many others, based on the executive orders issued by the White House in the past week. So it's gonna be a little bit of a moving target. The stay only applies to programs that were already authorized to receive funding. It does not apply to any new funding. So the freeze is still in place for any grants or loans that are new funding and that have not already been appropriated for payment. But that is the current status. Again, I think that stays in place until 5:00 p.m. on Monday, with the expectation that the court will hear further argument on the request for the injunction, that a number of organizations have already filed in at least one case. Other cases may also be filed, you know, they may have already been filed, but we just don't know about them yet, but that would not be surprising.
Okay, I leave you with a lot of confidence, Trump versus the American courts, he's about 12 and 0. And I don't expect some court to issue a stay to do anything but aggravate Trump. And I suspect that since he has all power, that if his measures appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court, again, he's undefeated. I think that we would do well to begin to make analysis of his proposals and ideas juxtaposed to where his measures might leave this community. Very important. Not only is the ICE comments tonight brought from citizens very important, but the effort to alter all persons born in the United States, or citizens of the United States, and to the states in which they reside. If birth is altered as a standard for citizenship, what then do you go by? Do you have a BMW car, or do you live on the north side in the right zip code? What standard does citizenship rotate if birth is removed as a universal same standard in this? It coincides with ICE, because if birth don't matter, then Nick Maddox probably is not a citizen, couldn't, may not be a resident of the state of Florida, a citizen of the United States, because he wears bow ties, you know, whatever. United States, because he wears bow ties, you know, whatever capricious standard might exist. So it's a perilous moment, and in particular for people who've lived and evolved from slavery, such as my ancestors and I. It's been not a very comfortable thing when you delve into the 14th Amendment at all, because the 14th Amendment is all black people's birth certificate. As citizens of this country, that's our birth certificate from 1868. And to think that that certificate of birth of citizenship, correcting the notion of chattel property and slaves, three years following the Civil War, we received that all persons born, because people didn't know what to do with four million black folk who was African slaves. They didn't have a status. And the Supreme Court precedent is well-established. Commissioner Cummins, you know well, dread Scott, that a black man has no rights, which by law, a white man is bound to respect. These things, the pre-Civil War mindset of Dred Scott, and the mindset of retribution and putting people back in office who were banned from office after the Civil War, which is post-Reconstruction, is a hell of a concoction that those of us who've evolved and have been created by law, as black people have been the only people on the planet, created by law, in every step, in every move, in every evolution, to a right to vote, opportunity for housing, the right to not be segregated. I mean, everything is created by law for us. So when executive order can just take our created legal status away, it's a great concern. So my ask as a policymaker in this county is that, again, from District One's perspective, we have straight concern, and we feel very vulnerable, and we're feeling very uncertain. These attacks on DEI, the coming out, the people who, you said Vic, Wick, Vince Wick is on the chopping block, Housing Section 8 is on the block. CNN ran a long list of them today. And when you look at them, they are racially imbalanced, it's impact. The magnitude of the injury is going to be disproportionately injurious to African-American citizens. And so I raise this question to you, Mr. Chairman, with the desire to understand from our federal lobbyists, they should report their understanding in Washington. And I don't care if we put them on speakerphone and they talk to us by speakerphone, but that we might know, are we going back to slavery? We see people rounded up and put on military planes. I mean, are we at war? Military plane, use that against enemies, you know? I went back and asked our officers, was, were they participating in ICE raids? Were they deputized? Have they been incorporated as a wing of the federal government to deputize, to raid and to assist the federal government in raids? Someone mentioned the PSCC, Public Safety Coordinating Council. We already got a lot of stuff going on at our jail. Are we going to house ICE-rated victims? For how long? Do we get a check for them? What is going on? What is our status as a local venue, home room, home rule government in relation to the state? The state 10th Amendment in relation to the 14th, the federal government? What is the new orbit and constellation of governmental entities of who we are? That's the kind of stuff that I don't think, from the vulnerable evolution of being an African in America, that I'm concerned with. The strides of our government right now is very serious, what great sensitivity and the hurt of all of these cuts, not just the rounding up, because black people have been rounded up. Hell, our jail is 70% Leon County every week, every month. We feel rounded up all the time. So that's not as frightening as cutting off money and food and the prices of groceries, and people ain't got nowhere to live and housing costs, that part. So thank you all. This is the nature. This is what is behind every word on this sheet of paper, that quality of fear that has been expressed by many people tonight. That is all that I have, Mr. Chairman, and I hope that in the coming few days, that your eyes and heart will stay monitoring these dynamic impacts that are adverse to citizens of District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and I am sensitive to your feelings on the subject. As I was talking to the county administrator, I'm cool with whatever the will of the board wants to do, but the county administrator was just showing me that these agencies aren't supposed to report back until February 10th, 10th of their, like, what they're doing and progress, and I assume...
We have a meeting on the 11th.
Yeah, and we have a commission meeting on the 11th. May I suggest that we have an information item at our February 11th meeting that sort of addresses each of the things you pointed out in your memo, as Commissioner Maddox pointed out earlier, and as I believe the legislature's bill that they're moving right now severely limits our ability as a local government to do much in regards to ICE raids and all these other things. But we can certainly get a better feel of the status of how these things are playing out at our February 11th meeting.
Very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That up, I guess, analysis or whatever is gonna come back on the 11th. Mr. Administrator, I think most of the funding pauses were, I think somewhere in there talked about they're analyzing those funders, those grants and loans to see what's in conflict with the executive order that the president put out. Can we have an analysis of that original executive order as well?
Yes.
Just on the 11th?
Absolutely, and we'll provide what we know. I suspect there's not gonna be a whole lot that we know even on February 11th. The administration has been given broad latitude to waive some of the pause on federal funding if they determine that it is aligned with the president's priorities. And with the other ones, again, we don't know how long the stay will last, but we'll provide all the information that we have by that time.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I would imagine that, I mean, at the very least, we'll know what the state's intention is in terms of their ask of local government, right?
I'll just conclude, Mr. Chairman, in saying that every school, every school in my district is a Title I school. And the aim at Title I schools and after-school and lunch programs and all of that, that feels personal, personal. It is personal to me and the good people of District One. That's why I feel this sensitive tonight, to these concerns.
I hear you, Commissioner. I hear you, and I think the board hears you, so we'll get that item back on the 11th and kind of see where we're at. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this evening, we heard a citizen speak to us, Laura McNeff. She's the mother of Anthony Branca, who was killed 10 years ago by a distracted driver. So she and the father of Anthony Branca have been advocating very heavily for hands-free device legislation. So basically, there are 31 other states in the country that have passed legislation that prevents drivers from texting, using their phone, interacting with their phone while they're driving. Studies have shown that people using, interacting with their phone while they're driving increase risk of crashes by 23 times. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to pass out two things. Here's an article from the Tallahassee Democrat from December about Demetrius Branca, Anthony's father, as well as Laura McNeff, the mother that spoke today. And I wanted you to, just to get a chance, you may have read this when it came out in December in the Democrat. What I'm asking the board to do today is Representative Tant has filed legislation in the House to basically implement that legislation, making Florida a hands-free device state, like the other 31. Last session, when she filed that, it got really far. It passed three committees of reference, which is terrific for a House bill, if you follow this stuff. It didn't quite get to the general body. She has decided to file the legislation again this year. What's happening as we speak is Demetrius Branca, Anthony's father, is traveling around the state, going to county commissions, just like Ms. McNeff did today, urging county commissions to adopt a resolution in support of this legislation. So what I wanted to pass to you is the resolution that we've been asked to support and approve. This resolution will support Representative Tant's bill, and then once we do it, they'll combine our resolution approval with the other county commissions and city commissions around the state and present that to the legislature in hopes that the bill will be passed. So I'd like to make a motion for this resolution to be adopted by the county commission.
Okay, we got a motion in a second for the resolution. Is there any discussion? It's pretty clean. Yeah. No worries. All right, well, if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. No, passage unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then I got an email from a community leader, Grant Gelhart. I think many of you know him. He was urging us to consider the World Cross Country Championships coming up in 2026 as a sustainable event. I know that our county has been strong advocates for green event guidelines, where a vendor at an event is asked to use paper cups and that type of thing to help make the event sustainable. And so I had a question for the county administrator in just asking, have any plans been made yet on the World Cross Championship event and whether or not that is planned to be a sustainable event?
I'll let Maggie take it.
Good evening, and we've talked with Grant routinely, too. He's a very engaged citizen with our sustainability program. So a couple of things. The World Cross Country event, as Carrie alluded to yesterday, your retreat, has a lot of standards and compliance that are out of our hands. One example will be that the water containers, for example, that the preeminent athletes utilize have to be closed and sealed to ensure that they weren't unintentionally receiving, you know, illicit fluids, so to say. So there are some parameters where we cannot say explicitly, there shall be no water bottles, for example, just throwing that out. But what I will share is within any latitude that Leon County government does have at the event, we're already preparing. So one example would be those volunteers that we've already filled up the list for will be stationed at the waste disposal sites, where there's a recycling container and a garbage, and we will have volunteers that are stationed there to help people make the best decision when they are at that point of, do I recycle or do I dispose? Even if we can't say, you can't have that water bottle here. Just using that as one example. Where we can have some control, perhaps, in, like, the VIP tent or other areas, we will have all the influence that we are allowed to during the course of the event, and already a year out looking very closely at what those can be.
That sounds great. Maggie, thanks very much. I don't need to make a motion to this effect or anything, but, Mr. County Administrator, once we get, the next time we get an update on the event coming up, and I know we're gonna hear a lot about it between now and 2026, would you be so kind to work with staff to have a section in there that talks about the efforts we're taking to make this as sustainable as possible, working within, of course, the contract and the agreement that we have with the association? Thank you, sir.
May I speak to that on point?
Of course.
That point?
All right, Mr. ...
Thank you for, I saw Carrie post here. I think that all of our paper cups should have our name, Leon County, and I don't know what color schemes we're gonna, I know this is dark, I'm just saying, when we get a paper...
Just draw it on there.
It's getting late, but paper cups with Leon County in the World Cup in Leon County is the World, it's not the World Cup.
World Cross Country Champion.
Cross Country, that's right. And we're gonna have these cups with Leon County everywhere and leading into, and then the tent should have our name right there in front of the worldwide World of Sports coverage, this worldwide event. So I would do everything we could to create paraphernalia akin to what we did for the bicentennial, but go all out and take advantage of promoting Leon County.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor, anything else?
One more thing. I just wanted to point out that Miranda Hernandez is leaving us, leaving the county organization, and this is her last county commission meeting, so just wanted to welcome, you know, wanted to thank her for her work and wish you well for your next chapter. She joined Leon County in May 2021 as a management intern, then worked for the Office of Management and Budget, then came back as a management analyst for the county administration office. So just want to thank you for all your work. You've been great to work with, and we'll miss you, and good luck with your next chapter. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From all the speakers who stayed to speak about protecting and addressing and hoping to speak to the fear of members of our immigrant community, and their family members and even members of our community who aren't immigrants. You stayed a long time to speak with us, and I want to thank you for coming to speak on behalf of people who, for it may not be safe for them to come speak in courthouse, so that we can hear their concerns. Thank you for that. As mentioned before, the term sanctuary county itself is not something that's loud on state law, but what I would like to discuss is every creative avenue we can to effectively prevent and minimize harm to our community members. That is what I believe we are responsible for. As far as deprioritizing arrests of undocumented immigrants, we, ooh, I can't, how do I rephrase that? I don't like to be up here telling you why we can't do something. Let me tell you, in 2017, before I ever thought I would run for office, I joined a group, and that group met with Sheriff Walt McNeil of the Leon County Sheriff's Office to get with him to find out what their office could do to make sure that our immigrant community members, both documented and undocumented, did not have to feel fear that they were going to get cruel treatment, similar to what directives were coming from higher level of government. And so I would just say, I think that is a good avenue to go. That is an elected constitutional officer that I have just personally found receptive to doing everything he can within his power to protect the diversity of our community. As for us, people are scared, and these folks are not the cause of the problem. They're victims of a systemic failure, another national systemic failure, to, for a long time, to have an effective and timely, proper immigration system that allows people to be processed and wait in decades of lines or try to come here another way, because that's not realistic. And so some people will say that some of the incorrect excuses for what I would say cruel actions are to protect crime. And what we've known is there's no evidence that there is more crime committed in immigrant communities than anywhere else. In fact, the evidence shows that there is less crime, other than immigration law, that occurred in immigrant communities. These are members of our community that our values as a board have always expressed in our decisions, that we value and protect the diversity of our community. This is a major part of that. So changes and things are gonna come fast and furious from the new administration, and I do want to be careful that we are not strategic, that we are not effective in what we say and do. And as we talk through this as a board, my objective is always to, that our words, decisions, and actions are the ones that are likely to be most effective to prevent, minimize harm to our community members. And so that may not be a press release calling us a certain type of city. It may be a policy change or a community service program that we can help support, or it may be advocacy at a federal level, maybe all other kinds of things. We need to make sure there is a legal limit, but I want to... need to make sure there is a legal limit, but I want to make sure that based on our value of keeping a diverse community, that we find out and go all the way to the limit of our legal authority and do absolutely everything we can for those members of our community. I think that's the least we can do. I'm not asking, and I don't think anyone is asking us for do anything illegal in our positions, but I think what we are being asked to do is to do everything creative and legally possible to do that. And so if that means we have to get more attorneys in the county's attorney's office for all these executive orders that are going to keep coming, then that would be, you know, why I'd be interested. If that means, if that means we can effectively find ways to minimize harm, even if they're not things that are loud and all over the news, the idea is, everything I would like us to do is to be effective in minimizing harm. I mean, our students, we heard the story that will be too common of someone, a parent wearing a student, is going to get yanked out of school. And they have enough, with school shootings and everything else, kids have enough to be scared of when they go to school, of them or their friend getting yanked out. And so I'm curious, one, I don't need to make, I don't want to make a motion for this yet because it's going to be very complicated, but I want to plant this in the county administrator's head and perhaps get some advice from him. One, it would be helpful for us to know and stay informed of if our detention center, which we're not in charge of, but we fund, is increasing the number of detention nights it needs to hold based on actions of federal or state administrations. What is that doing to our budget? It'd be good to be aware of that. How is that impacting us? Second, and how does it impact our future study, right? So you don't need to do a study today and then the administration's executive order changes next week, but I think those are things we do need to be tracking and just be aware of as we make decisions. We are going to have, hesitate because this is, we need to be very smart about what we do if we're going to be helpful here. There are going to be these harmful actions that cut, try to cut food assistance and rent assistance and medical funding. And many of our community members rely on those things. And I don't know if month-to-month updates at a meeting on actions are going to move quick enough. I don't even know if that would work. So is it, as things happen, does it mean that we get more frequent briefings as board members on federal actions, on between meetings, on how they impact us? Does it mean that we need a workshop to discuss policies and adjustments that give the county administrator the authority or to put him in a position to creatively respond to new things that harm our community in a way that we can help between meetings? Is there, is there a way that allows us to move quickly but responsibly to help members in our community? And it's, I think it's something that perhaps we'll learn more in another meeting. If I had a discreet answer that I thought was going to bring back an agenda item next month to do it, I think County Administrator, I'm going to talk to you more about it offline and see what we can come back with, even if that stuff got out sooner. But the idea here is, how do we put ourselves in a position where we're not just wait and see, where we can plan and think smart about what we do to protect the values of our community and in a way that does not do any harm and do more harm? And so I think we have a very difficult term ahead of us to stay committed to the values we espouse for the members of our community. And thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Cummings, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to commend the staff and the county administrator for their professionalism and their preparedness and their willingness to provide us the information that we need. They stand at the podium on a minute's notice, but they're always prepared. And I think they never lead us in the wrong, in the wrong direction. And I think that we give credit to the county administrator for selecting enormously competent staff that leads and guides us factually on information as members of the county commission. I also share the sentiment of my fellow commissioners, and I appreciate the individuals that came forth and spoke to us about the impact of the raise on our immigrant, immigrant community. And I appreciate a county attorney and commissioner Maddox for looking at the law, pretty much giving us the parameters of what we can do at this point, that what Leon County is not a sanctuary city, county, and the entire state is prohibited from becoming a sanctuary state. But I think we need to be diligent and diligent about what's going on. So I look forward to next month, or if not sooner. I think if something comes down that's detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of our community, before we meet next month, I think our county administrator and our chair can have the authority to call an important meeting or emergency meeting so that we can address, address those issues. I feel strongly, I have strong sentiment for the immigrant community, but I'm just not sure right now what legally and definitively we can do. Do we know, Mr. County Administrator, if ICE is in contact with any of our local law enforcement, or do they just go ahead and do what they need to do?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cummings, we primarily, I think the law enforcement, again, I think you all noted the separation that we have with law enforcement. We're monitoring very closely, obviously, the current state legislation, I think we're, which is really sweeping bill right now, entitled the Trump Act. Again, I say that just to say, the emphasis they're putting, the language in the bill that's currently at the state says that there will be a chief immigration officer created, and that the duties of the chief information, chief immigration officer will be monitoring the compliance of local governments specifically related to federal immigration enforcement. And they will have the power to sue local governments for failure, failure to follow the law regarding immigration enforcement. And it's, again, it's sweeping, it's very broad, it's very aggressive. At the same time, I think we're likely to see, perhaps, the governor even veto the bill. I think we're going to have a contest over whose bill's tougher at the end of this. So as sweeping as this is, it may ultimately get vetoed and for something that's, again, even more aggressive, if you will. So again, we're monitoring all that legislation very closely to see what the impacts will be. And I don't think that there's any doubt that there will be a very strong focus on local government compliance. And I think there'll be some, you know, incentives on the other side as well. I know the current state legislation dedicates $500 million to state and local law enforcement agencies that are perhaps more willing to avail themselves of that sort of thing. But we will be letting you know, we'll be following it very closely and letting you know how it evolves throughout the, whatever remainder of this legislative session is, and then beyond that. So we'll keep you very closely posted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. And of course, I have little doubt that he would keep us apprised very timely of any challenges or any immediate issues that we need to address. And having said that, I also want to commend the county administrator and his staff for just keeping us up to date last week on the freezing conditions, on the shelters to house the homeless, homeless people. And we basically got a day-to-day update. And so I appreciate that. So I know that we'll get an up-to-date, update as soon as, as we know something more definitive about the ICE raising and what have you.
And I've just learned that the bill has passed since we began our, the legislature's bill, the legislature's immigration bill.
While we're here.
Yes.
While we're here.
We've been here for two weeks.
Thank you. A couple of last things. Let's see, one last thing. I want to request a proclamation to be given to the Florida A&amp;M University and comparable marching 100 band. And its band director, Mr. Shelby Shipman, they were designated as the HBCU Band of the Year recently by ESPN. So I'd like to request, move a motion, did you second it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For proclamation for the Family Marching 100.
What, Family Monitoring?
Family Marching 100.
Got it. Okay, we got a, are they going to come in here and perform?
That's okay. They were designated as the Band of the Year.
Yeah.
Recently by ESPN. And perhaps, maybe, if it's okay with the commission, perhaps they can have a delegate from the band when we present the proclamation, hopefully next month to come and.
I want the whole drum section.
Play some music. Get a drum line, maybe. Play some music.
We got a motion and a second to recognize the Family Marching 100. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passes unanimously.
And finally, I just want to also just thank the fellow commissioners for the respect and the camaraderie that we have with each other and the respect we have for each other's opinion. But in the final analysis, we listen to each other, but then we, I believe we make very intelligent, thought-provoking, and informed decisions that really benefit the citizens of this community. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for your direction for all of us. And I just thank my fellow commissioners as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox?
First of all, Mr. Chair, great meeting tonight.
Thank you.
We got a lot to go through, but you got us through it. Even though you're going to get us out of here, one of the latest meetings I've been in in a long time.
I tried.
Yeah, yeah. First things first, want to send my condolences out to a family of a great man. Had his services last week, Ted Parker. Was an icon in our community, not just in construction, but in martial arts. Heard so many great stories about how many folks' lives he's touched, not just in business, but as their sense saying. So I want to take the opportunity to recognize Ted and his contributions to our community. Also, a fellow commissioner who passed, not from here, but from Jacksonville, Barbara Boone, Forest Boone, her husband passed. I want to send my condolences out to their family as well. It's good to be back in the chambers. Had a great retreat yesterday. Reflect the comments of everybody here that we are a damn good commission. I am proud of what we do and who we are as a commission. So I did want to reflect that. Mr. Chair, I did want to ask for, ask the county administrator a quick question. When it comes to namings, Mr. Administrator, I know that we had, we had put in place some, I guess, ordinance. An ordinance that said that you had to be at least 20 years. Is it eight, 16, 20 years, I think?
I think we go by terms, four terms.
Four terms. And it has to be after a person, after the tenure of the sitting commissioner? It has to be after they're no longer on.
So I'd have to look at the policy. Yeah, but I believe generally speaking, you're right. And these are guidelines for the board to consider.
Guidelines. I have made mention to this a few times. A few times I have made mention it, and most people probably thought I was joking, but I really wasn't. For 20, what, 27, 28 years, Commissioner Proctor? About 28? 28 years, Commissioner Proctor has led District One as the district commissioner. And by the end of this term, it would be 32, correct?
Thirty.
Thirty. Thirty by the end of this term. And, you know, most people would say, well, maybe you should wait until, you know.
Dies.
He dies, or even, or even he's off the dais. But I'm just not willing to wait that long because I truly appreciate, even though he gives me hell sometimes, particularly today. He was on, he was on, he was on me today, Bill. But, but for the contribution that he's made in District One, and he may not even be thinking this way, but I don't, I don't want to wait until, you know, the end of this term or if he decides to run again. I would really like for us to consider naming the fairgrounds after William C. Proctor.
Second.
And for it to be brought back for us for our consideration as a board.
Squeeze my head in, it's getting me.
Whoa.
So we got a motion and a second. Is that an item that, would we have to?
Agenda item, sure.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, would we have to weigh the rules? Or are there our rules, our guidelines?
No, no, no. That's why, that's why I wanted the agenda item, because in an agenda item, I can't remember all the specifications. I know it's 16 years. I don't know if you have to be off the dais, if you're on the dais, can you still do it? But I don't, I don't care who you are. If you're here for 28 years and you're, you're still sitting here making policy and making the noise and causing the hell that Bill Proctor's causing up here, I'm willing to go ahead and give it a consideration now. So just an agenda item to make sure that we're in right standing to be able to do it with the, with the ordinance that we have in place. And if we're not, what do we have to do to get there? But I would, I would definitely like for us to consider the fairground, the fairground, by the time, the next fair comes next year, to be the William C. Proctor.
Cut the ribbon.
Fairgrounds. And particularly, I want to sign right nearby the bathrooms, because he has fought tirelessly to have indoor.
They're going to be brand new soon.
Bathroom. So, yeah, that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we got a motion and a second from Commissioner Maddox to rename the North Florida Fairgrounds to the William C. Proctor. Got to say, Bill.
He really is serious about that bathroom thing. I.
Oh, I'm dead serious about that.
I believe him. I believe him.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should wait until the master plan is remodeled and everything. But all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. We'll see, we'll see an item coming back, Commissioner Proctor.
That's amazing.
That's pretty cool, man.
Commissioner, that's just.
We ask no comments now. You be out here all day. We trying to go home.
The only caveat, comment on.
Don't mess it up. Mr. Chair, that's all I got. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Caban, Vice Chair Caban.
Wow.
Congratulations to Vice Chair Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great thinking, Commissioner Maddox. I love that. One of our retreat items yesterday was to increase pedestrian safety, particularly in school zones. But I don't remember who, if it was Commissioner Minor, Commissioner O'Keefe. I've been working on a project in my district, probably since early spring. This, this issue came before our office from constituent complaints, honestly. We reached out to Florida Department of Transportation to do a traffic and safety study. They actually performed two. And on Woodville Highway and Natural Bridge Road, the result of their, which is right in front of Woodville K-38 Elementary School, the response from Florida Department of Transportation was that it is an unsafe intersection and that it's in need of a traffic light and a turning signal. And right now, they're evaluating opportunities for funding. So what I would like to do is, I spoke with the county administrator, and I think there's some funding options that we could look at, whereas we go look, front the money and get reimbursed by FDOT. But I don't really want us to, you know, be stuck in one avenue. But because it is in front of a school and in a school zone, I do think it should be a priority. So what I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to direct staff to work with FDOT to look at funding options to bring back to the board for, for Woodville and Natural Bridge Road, traffic light intersection and turning lane.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir, Commissioner Proctor.
Is there any requirement that a study precedes a light or a lighting situation?
The study, yeah, the study's done. So they came back to us and said it needs a traffic light and a turning, and a turning lane.
Let's go for it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, Mr. County Administrator, you know, this, what I heard earlier today, you know, I heard the board talk about this in different aspects, but through our RFP process, I think what I heard from different commissioners is that there was a little bit of frustration that a lot of the applicants were thrown out for paperwork issues or, I don't know the details, right? But what I would like to see. But what I would like to see, and, you know, I'll kind of point to the county administrator and see what his recommendation is, but what I'm thinking is, we ask for an agenda item to come back with some procurement or RFP proposed changes. So that way, it embraces the spirit of more of a competitive process, right? And what I would like to see is that when we put out an RFP, I don't want to see applicants being thrown out. I want to see applicants being scored, and I want us to be able to look at, if, you know, five people apply, I don't want half, more than half getting thrown out. And so I don't know the way to frame it, Mr. County Administrator, what would you recommend here? But basically, I want, we put out RFP, I want it to be competitive. I want to see vendors, I want them scored by staff, and I want us to have options to come before the board.
Yes, and I think I've got the spirit of what you said captured. I mean, caveat, as you all would imagine, it's, it's, you know, replete with legal determinations that we maneuver, and we have the same goal, too. We put out RFPs to not disqualify, to qualify people and not disqualify them. So of course, I'll work with the county attorney's office and purchasing, and we'll bring you back an item that provides any additional guidance or ideas or anything we can do to make sure we can streamline that process and do as good a job as we can at qualifying respondents.
Commissioner, is that something that you guys seem to be interested in? If we have a motion?
Okay. I like the way in.
You're fine, go ahead. You're fine.
I'm thinking, Commissioner Caban, if you just ask staff to streamline, then arbitrarily they use their thoughts about streamlining. I think that maybe a workshop is more universal and opens the whole procurement policy to us. Then we all get to cherry pick segments, which, you know, when was the last time we went going through the procurement? Have we had a workshop on it in recent years?
Yeah, you just had one. Just had a purchasing workshop.
When was it?
Three months ago.
Nick, I've been here a long time, Nick. I can't remember December. So you can remember way back when.
Very recent.
Two months ago. But, but, but is that what you want us to look at? That I do have that procurement thingy document that you wanted us to make suggestions?
Ultimately, what I want to see is, when we put out an RFP, I want to see, you know, several vendors that have been scored for us to look at. I think the last few times we put out RFP processes, I've seen that there's been a lot of, what I believe staff calls our policy, is that non, what's it called? Non-responsive? Non-responsive? Is that the, is that the correct phrase? Non-responsive because they, you know, forgot to sign the paperwork or they're missing one component, but they're still, they still could be good vendors. And so I just want to see them, I would like to see them scored by staff still and not considered non-responsive. Non-responsive to me means they didn't apply.
Yes, Commissioner Maddox?
I agree with some of that, but then I do think that there has to be a line somewhere. I mean, when you think about the information, so maybe the seriousness of what we're talking about when we call, what do we call non-responsive versus, you know, what we don't?
Incomplete.
You know, what's substantive? If all the substantive things are filled out, they might have forgot to sign something, then I can get past that. But let's say it's something that we may really need, and then they forget to do that, and it's like, well, I don't want, I don't want that even scored. So, so I guess really what I would need to know is, what's deemed to be unresponsive and what's not? And then we kind of mess with that to say, okay, well, if they forgot to sign that one piece of paper, I don't deem that to be non-responsive. And that's more technicalities.
Yeah, and it's, and Chaz will tell you, I think I want to take the words out of her mouth. It's what the law deems to be non-responsive. And, but again, I think too, you'll find when we bring you back the information, that you'll find that we do things that may go even beyond what you thought. We have, we have mandatory pre-bid conferences where we make all of the respondents sit at a table, and we walk through the document with them, and we tell them everything that's required and how to do it and when to do it and in what format. And we, but we do have legal requirements in these, and depending on how you solicit a procurement, that comes with obligations and interpretations on what is legally required and what's not. Chaz, I didn't want to totally preempt you, if you wanted to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, many times, and it happened in the scenario earlier, two different procurements that the board considered contracts for at this meeting. They failed to submit a required document, again, after they were told in the solicitation document itself, after they were repeatedly told in the pre-bid meeting, all of them, some of which are literally required by law. So you can't, you can't waive or deem something a minor irregularity that is required by law.
Right.
The other reason vendors are frequently found to be unresponsive or non-responsive is they do not comply with the MWBE requirements, which is a requirement and policy of this board and is something that this board in the past has very much focused on and been critical of when vendors do not meet those requirements. So of course, we are happy to take a look at the process, but simply saying just because someone, it's a technicality, in fact, many times, it's not just a technicality.
Madam County Attorney, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So like in an instance when a form is missing and the deadline's five o'clock?
Yes.
Can we call these people at four o'clock?
No, that is.
The law doesn't allow that?
These are sealed. There is a whole line of case law.
You don't know it's missing until it's.
That's right. We don't touch those. They could turn them in a week ahead of time, or many times, what they do is they went to the last 15 minutes before the deadline, and they turn in their stuff, and guess what? Because they waited to the last minute, they forgot something.
And that's dictated by state law.
That is dictated by case law. We follow Chapter 187.057, which governs all state procurements, okay? We're not bound by it, but we've adopted it because it is easy, there's case law that interprets it, so that when we get a protest from a vendor who's trying to assert that we did something that was biased or that was partial or that was not consistent with law, that we can point to the case law that says, this is not a minor irregularity because you didn't file a mandatory form. That is consistent with case law that we can defend. We do get bid protests quite a bit, but we can always defend them, and many of them don't go to the bid protest hearing because we, we explain it. The case law's there, and they, we don't have to go through that process. But again, happy to bring anything back to the board about ways to streamline our procurement processes.
Cool. Thank you.
Well, on point.
Yes, sir.
What we did tonight with.
Lobbying.
Lobbying thing, we really, that was not a bid. See, there's a professional service, and there's the, it's like.
Building something.
Brad, you know, like opens up a, we need bid for 25,000 square foot county public works building. What we did today, we said, look, we got $40,000. Who won it? Send me your resume. And we evaluated resumes. When we do a building, we say we want a 25,000 square foot building. What can you build it for? Tell us a price. You name the price. Who's got the lowest price? We want 37 windows, we need some car garages, what price? That's a bid. What we did today was a selection, was a beauty contest, and we just didn't have, the board didn't have everybody's resume who actually applied. And in bidding, we typically see the bid scores, the bid sheets, the bid submissions of all of the vendors when we were bidding. But for the beauty contest, we saw but one applicant, period, whether he won.
Only the ones that are responsive. You don't see the ones that are non-responsive. We don't.
That part.
Yeah.
So we will be bewildered by the absence of so many.
I guess, I guess what I'm, thank you for the dialogue, Madam Attorney. I guess what I want to, what I'd like to see here is, and if it can't happen, if it 's against the law, I understand. Do other counties, do they, when vendors apply, do they ever come to the board on the day of the vote and present? I guess what I'm looking at is, I don't, like, if you had read the agenda item, you would have not seen any one of others' applications, right, unless you went and asked for it. And so, and this, what I would like to see is just like the spirit of competitive bid process. So, Mr. County Administrator, if we could just bring it, bring it back, does that need board direction to just?
Well, it can't be competitive if you've already said we're gonna pay $40,000. I mean, I mean, if we say we ain't gonna put no price, can you do it for $4,000? Can you do it for $7,000? That's competing.
It sounds like we have a lot of information that we can provide to help clarify these issues, because they can get confusing in terms of how you, how you decide to, what methodology you use to procure and solicit services. So, but we can do that, and I do hear the intent to try to, again, do everything we can to attract and qualify as many respondents as we can, because that's our goal as well. But we'd be happy to bring you back an item that does that.
Wait, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
We got, can I get Commissioner Minor in here, man? He's been waiting patiently.
I'm sorry, are we doing the cars again? I'm sorry.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I try to be quick. So, Commissioner Caban, I understand the spirit of what you're saying, and I agree with you. I think we need to try to encourage as many applicants as possible. With this particular case, I don't think we got a lot of responses, and I think we talked about this before at a meeting, is because the award was, I think, $40,000. Now, $40,000 seems like a lot of money to me, but some of these lobbyists that deal with hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, paying, paid by their clients, I think that probably had something to do with it in this case. But you're talking about it in a more general sense. You know, I don't think our staff have a lot of fluff added to the RFP process for documentation that's required. So I understand the spirit of what you're saying. I want to have something come back. If there are things that we can do to make it easier for applicants to apply so that we get more that are responsive, that's great. But I do not want to remove things that may not be required by law but are still important for us to know. The money we have belongs to taxpayers, not to us. You know, if we were a private business, we could do whatever we wanted, but we aren't. And so I do not want to remove things like conflict of interest checks, collusion, you know, pledge not to collude. I mean, those types of things are important parts of the, of the RFP process that I don't want, I don't want to lose. And I don't think you do either.
No, I agree. I agree.
But I felt important to say that because I don't know that there's, we'll see. I don't think there'll be a lot of stuff that we can pare down from the RFP process. If there is, let's find out and let's, let's work on it.
Yeah.
But I do want to make sure that we don't sacrifice, I want to make sure we don't sacrifice, you know, some important documentation we need to see for brevity and lose something in the process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe, and then Maddox, and then Caban, close it out.
This, we just had a purchasing workshop, October 22nd. This whole process on this issue and this one service has been nothing but us armchair quarterbacking ourselves. We started by approving a two-year extension earlier last year of a lobbyist, and then a month or two later, saying we want another lobbyist. And so we said, instead of just picking another lobbyist, which we had every right to do, we did not have to go out to RFP, we put our own restrictions to do an RFP, okay? And then it came back. We didn't like it, and so we made a decision, the board made a decision to go with who we thought was better. And so I don't think we should spend more of our time on purchasing policies that we did a workshop on last quarter, when I don't think our county is doing, has done policies that make extra work beyond the legal requirements that we haven't told them to do. And the reality is that we ought to just, we picked who we wanted, that was the, we should have just started there, and we finished there. I don't think we need to break open our policy materials for what is an exception to the rule, where the rule allowed us to pick who we wanted anyways. Thank you.
Mr. Maddox?
Oh, it's been a long night. So.
It's all right.
Is there any kind of way we could just, Commissioner Caban, because it sounds like we, I think we had a workshop looking at procurement specifically. Yeah. If we can just get, if we could just get some information about it, and then after we get the information about it, if there's, if there's a specific piece of it that you want to pull out, then we could, then you can come back and ask for the agenda item?
Yes, sir. You, go ahead.
Thank you. Point of clarification, I appreciate the feedback from the board. I didn't come into this with any specific motion. I kind of wanted to hear where the board is at. Let me be clear, I'm not talking about just what happened today. There's been plenty of other agenda items, such as the accounting audit firm, marketing firm for Visit Tallahassee. There are plenty of RFPs that go out, and if you read the agenda material, it says X amount of vendors were deemed non-responsive. That's what I'm trying to get at here. I want more vendors at the table for us to look at that are scored by staff. That is the goal. I'm not just referencing today. I think today is the most recent example, but we've had conversation as a board about previous items, and I just want a competitive bid process, period. So, and that's it.
All right, so if, would you like an agenda item or?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we have an informational item come back, Mr. County Administrator? Do I need a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Some moves?
Okay, we got a, can you make your own, yeah, you can. Motion in a second to have an information item come back on maybe ways we can streamline or cast a wider net in our RFP process. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. All right, you're still up.
That's all I got.
Any news?
That's all I got, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, I think we are very close. I just got a 30-minute speech, and we'll land this plane. We'll bring this aircraft carrier into dock. No, I got nothing, guys. I just want to say, and Madam, Madam previous chair, I just want to say thank you for a very robust meeting. You know, I hope you guys don't take offense to my desire to keep it moving. And Commissioner Minor, I wasn't laughing at you earlier, I was laughing with you, but I didn't, I didn't realize you weren't laughing. No, I just find it funny sometimes how we, you know, we, man, we will beat the snowball, snowman to death. And on that note, I did want to say a big thank you to our public works staff and all of our emergency management staff. I saw Director Peters here earlier, you know, obviously unprecedented event last week, and Matt and your staff and community relations and Vince and the updates and the sanding of the roads. I saw people complaining about the sanding of the roads, and I'm like, man, why you, why you complaining about the sanding of the roads, man? Something better than nothing. We don't have ice, we don't have salt around here. So I think all things considered, once again, our Leon County staff really showed out in another unprecedented event, and there is still piles of snow on the ground at Child's High School, which is remarkable to me a week later. So certainly something we'll never see again in our lifetime, and once again, Leon County staff stepped up and hammered it like they always do. So thank you all so much.